Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's City Council meeting. I like to call the meeting to order and ask Clark to call the role.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. He was here a moment ago. There he is. Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Present.
Thank you, everyone. Looking at our agenda moving forward, we do not have a meeting next week. On March 31st. We will meet again in an official meeting on Wednesday, April 7th. As a note, particularly for my colleagues, that meeting starts at 6:00 P. M. On April 7th, because we will begin with a presentation of the city manager, of the budget by the city manager is the our FY 2022 recommended budget. So don't forget, 6:00 P. M. On the 7th. We also have an Arbor Day proclamation that day. Voting item will be the second reading ordinance approving FY 21 budget amendment number five. And a continued discussion of committees. We'll have an update on the city manager search, because I believe at that point. We will be done with the application time that we set, or soon, it'll be close soon. And we'll do an update on the reimagining Public Safety Task Force. Then on April 14th, what we have scheduled at the moment is a public hearing on the FY 2022 recommended budget. Work session and is a tentative interim report from the Parking Management Task Force and continued discussion of committees. As we're looking at our schedule in April, there are a couple of things that I have been trying to schedule and just confirming people's availability. One is our budget open house, which we have tentatively scheduled for, I believe it is Saturday. April 10th. A budget open house. But again, that is tentative. And then we're looking to schedule a review of the project at Tacoma Junction. And I hope to nail down dates and people's availability by the end of the week. And provide a schedule for that, if not by Friday, the latest on Monday. So that are, that's our agenda coming up this evening. Just want to make a note that our city manager Suzanne Ludlow unfortunately can't be with us this evening. Her brother is gravely ill, and so she won't be joining us. And I know we all send our thoughts and prayers with her family at this time, and we hope she'll be back with us soon. So I think that's it for housekeeping things. I'm going to turn it over. Anne was with us, and I just lost her in the Zoom. But just to do a quick legislative update before we turn it to our presentation this evening.
I am here. Hi. Good evening, everybody. We're getting close. We've got about three weeks left in the legislative session. Quick update on our, on the city's priorities. On the police reform bills. They, as I've reported before, Senate has passed its bills. The House passed one omnibus bill. Tomorrow, the House will take up the Senate bills. There is a work group that has started meeting of senators and delegates to try to work out some of those differences. So that all is happening in Annapolis between the legislators right now. Also, we believe that there is going to be a push by the Senate Judicial Proceedings Committee to get the Trust Act out this week. They had brought it up yesterday, started discussing it. They seem to be doing a number of work groups, and this is another area where I believe they're doing a work group. And I think it's possible we'll see it discussed again in a voting session in the Judicial Proceedings Committee tomorrow. So the Senate leadership has made a commitment to get something past the session. Don't, don't know at this point, the prospects on the House side. The House has heard a bill, but it's the Senate that's really made it a priority. And a lot because of Senator Will Smith. On environmental issues, as I've reported, the Community Choice Energy Pilot Bill is passing. It passed the House. It had a hearing in the Senate, and so we're waiting a vote there. The Stormwater Management Standards Bill is moving seemingly without any difficulty. The Climate Solutions Bill that, that is kind of the, one of the primary bills of a lot of the environmental groups, including local Tacoma Park groups, has passed the Senate. It's in the House, and there are concerns about pieces of the bill, especially around some of the things that I know the city is very concerned about related to building standards. So I've been gathering a little more information on that, and I'll be circling back with some specific actions that the City Council and others may want to take related to securing passage of the bill with some of our priorities reflected in the bill. On transportation. As I had mentioned, the county's speed limit bill passed the House. We seem to have gotten some traction in the Senate for an amendment to have it apply to give, give authority to municipalities in Montgomery County to, to also be able to lower speed limits. We are working collaboratively with the folks from Gaithersburg and Rockville, who also support that amendment. We think we've got a decent shot at getting that amendment on in the Senate. And we believe then when the bill goes back over to the House, that we'll be able to get support there as well. I don't know that there's necessarily opposition to, to the issue. We'll, we'll find out Friday morning at a delegation meeting on the bill. But I think it's, it's more about the timing right now, and are people comfortable with making an amendment and having the bill go back over to the House? So that's the technical stuff that we'll, we'll make sure gets happens. There's also been movement, actually kind of surprising movement to a pretty significant transit bill that has been amended in the House to, to create a new fund called the Purple Line Construction Zone Grant Program. It, it won't, it mandates funding for that program beginning in FY 23. The way legislation and legislatively mandated funding works, they can't make it happen for FY 22. But it does mandate funding for FY, FY 23 and 24. And so I think the, the D 20 team had a lot to do with getting that into this bill. So and in talking to folks working on the bill who've been really leading the bill, they think it's got a good shot at getting out of the Senate as well. So we'll be carrying that message of support over there. And then finally, on housing issues. There is, there are very many housing-related bills that have been introduced. A number are passing. Right now, the priority issue is an emergency bill around preventing evictions in the coming months. There is, as folks know, there's a, there's a, an order by the governor that is very similar to an order by the CDC that prohibits evictions. It prohibits them in certain cases, not all cases. And in lease non-renewal cases, there is no restriction. There is no prohibition. And so we continue to work to try to get the legislature to pass a bill that either prohibits those kinds of evictions, or as a, as a fallback, I guess, requires that for landlords that access the emergency rental housing, emergency rental assistance funding that's come in from the federal government that they agree in accepting the money to not evict people for a certain amount of time, three months, four months, five months from receiving the money. So that's what we're working on right now. Senator Will Smith has that bill. Janelle Wilkins had the, the House bill. Unfortunately, in the House, it got stripped down. So we're really trying to work with Senator Smith to push forward a bill that goes further than the House bill did. We're, we're trying to get the Senate President's attention as well to make something meaningful happen before the evictions start in just a few weeks. And so I think those are the, the priority items.
Great. Awesome. Well, thank you very much for all that. There's a lot happening, and we'll look forward. Well, I guess we won't see you next week, but those of us again who work as a subcommittee of the council, myself, councilmember Kovar, and councilwoman Dibala, I'm sure will be keeping in touch with you next week, as I'm sure things will be busy. So thanks a lot, Anne.
And was, was there an update on the plastic ban bill?
No, no update from last week. It still has not moved in, in the Senate. And, you know, the, the sponsor of that bill is carrying a number of really kind of high-profile bills, and none have yet moved. So, you know, I think he's kind of struggling to figure out how to get things through and in what priority. So but now that crossovers passed this past Monday. Session just has a way, has a, has an ebb and flow, and things will be picking up very shortly, and they'll start moving things. So I'll definitely keep you posted.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Anne. All right. So.
Could I, could I ask a question? My sound was not great when you were speaking before, and I apologize for that. So I just wanted to clarify one point. When you were talking about the junction schedule, did you say whether we're looking at doing that leading toward a certain date for the potentially for the planning board, or is that still kind of up in the air?
I'm trying to confirm people's schedules at the moment, and I'm looking at us taking this up as soon as we can in April. The staff has been doing their review, and I see some people from the planning department nodding their heads. I know they all have, they're not here to talk about that tonight, here to talk about something else. And as people know, we are still waiting on S H A's input on the lay-by, which I believe hopefully we will get in a couple of weeks. So I think the timing of this should be right for the City Council to take it up again in April. But again, I'm, people's schedules are very difficult right now, given COVID and other things. And I just, before I release any dates, I want to make sure people can be with us to do that. So yeah, I don't want to say when we're scheduling. I'm, hopefully we'll have, as I mentioned, to have that information by the end of this week. Great. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Roz Grinsby, who's going to kind of set the stage for us. And you can introduce everybody who's here from the planning department.
Great. Thank you. So the plant, Montgomery Planning and the city of Tacoma Park are undertaking a minor master plan, which would be an amendment to the Tacoma Park Master Plan done in two, in the year 2000. So it's definitely time to revisit parts of it. You'll recall that the sector plan for Tacoma Langley and the sector plan for Long Branch area were done in about 2012, 13, in thereabouts. And so this is really another chance to look at parts that, parts of the city that can, can benefit from another, a fresh set of eyes. We are joined tonight by the, by a team from Montgomery Planning. We have Robert Cronenberg, who's the Deputy Planning Director. We have Elza Heisel McCoy, who's the Division Chief for Down County Planning. We have Leslie Howerton. John Marklin and Melissa Williams all on the call tonight. And we're going to walk through process and expectations and some timeframe. Elza, I will turn it over to you.
Roz, thank you very much. And Mayor Stewart and Council, thanks very much for having us. Before I go any further, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Cronenberg to say a few words.
And I think Roz summed up a lot of what we were going to cover, I think, just as an intro. But I'm Robert Cronenberg. I'm the Deputy Director and Mayor Stewart and Councilmembers. Thank you so much for having us on tonight so that we can get you up to speed on where we are with the, the work program for this minor master plan amendment. It's been a very collaborative process with your, your staff and with other members of the area that, that we've had communication with. So thanks to Roz, to Suzie for really walking us through a lot of things to get this on our work program and, and the continued communication that we've had. So with that, I'm going to be listening. I'm going to hear, answer any questions. But Elza has a great team, and he's going to walk you through that tonight in the process for, for the master plan amendment. So thank you. And again, I appreciate you having us here tonight.
Thanks, Robert. And I also, you know, I
You're muted.
Sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Robert. So I wanted to take the opportunity to do something that, that we should do more often. And that is to, to thank Roz Grigsby for, you know, for us at Planning. I've been working with Roz for probably 10 years. And she's great to work with and is always looking for, you know, a way to move things forward and a way to get, you know, to get the information where it needs to be. So I just wanted to thank her for all of her efforts, and we look forward to working with her as, as the plan unfolds and other Tacoma Park projects are moving along. So as Roz said, Elza Heisel McCoy, I'm the chief of the Down County Planning Team, also Ward One resident, and I'll, I'll be sort of assisting, providing, you know, providing insights and recommendations. The, the court team is going to be Leslie Howerton, who is our master plan supervisor. She's going to be the main point of contact with Roz for the sector plan effort. John Marklin on our team will be the, the lead planner. And Melissa Williams, whom some of you may know from, or remember from the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Plan, will be leading outreach on our side. So we have sort of the, the leadership team here tonight. The actual team on our end will be probably two to three times as, as large. But, you know, our screens are only so big. So we're, we're going to keep it very high level tonight and, and really focus on process. You know, this, as we'll get into a little bit with the schedule, this is a long process. It has sort of required steps. And we are, we're kicking off very soon, but tonight is just going to be about process. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. Share. And if somebody can let me know when they can see.
We can see it.
Fantastic. Okay. So again, planning process briefing in, in Ariel of Tacoma Park with sort of the Washington Adventist Campus and, and the surrounding communities. The, the process is a comprehensive review. The same that would be, are similar to what would be done for a master plan or a sector plan, but for a smaller plan area. Just in terms of, of nomenclature, master plans tend to cover larger areas. So the city of Tacoma Park, that's Chibi Chase area. Sector plans are generally used to define smaller areas. The Central Business District for Silver Spring, the Silver Spring Downtown and Adjacent Communities Plan will be a sector plan. And then a minor master plan amendment is, is sort of an even smaller area than that. And so we've done them up county in, in the Down County area. So Down County, we used to be called Area One. I think maybe the last time we, we came to you, we were Area One. When we moved to, we, we rebranded. So we're now the Down County team, which covers everything inside the Beltway. We did a minor master plan amendment for the Bethesda Purple Light Station. So it's the same process, but given the smaller area, the timeline is somewhat compressed. And so that involves presentation to consultation with and approval from, for this project. The City Council, the Planning Board, and then ultimately the County Council, who has ultimate authority to approve master and sector plans and the associated zoning changes that could come with it, whether there's zoning map changes or zoning text changes. Those all are approved at the County Council level, and I'll go through the schedule in more detail. Please, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt. So there will be a defined scope of work, which will be more about schedule, but then also the plan area boundaries. So plan boundaries are required to be set for master sector. Master plan amendments, and only those, only those properties included within this, the, the plan boundary can be considered for can be considered for zoning changes. However, I'll, I'll say that, you know, there, there is also a study area, which is generally larger than the plan boundary. And that's used primarily for traffic, but it can be used for other things. Certainly, the demographic and, and other studies that we do are, are likely going to be larger than whatever the plan boundary is. But there will be a defined scope of work, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, of course, focused public engagement. So I think the, the department has been working for a long time to find better and better ways of sort of meeting people where they are to participate in our process and to particularly I think generally, but also particularly of late, to sort of reach folks who may typically have not been included in the planning process. And so we, and we've been doing it for the Silver Spring Plan really all virtually, because we, we, we really started the bulk of that after, after the, the COVID lockdown. So why is this plan important? So it is important because state law requires comprehensive review of zoning and land use through the master plan process before any zoning changes can be made. The plan will assess the future needs of the Washington Adventist Hospital campus and the surrounding community. The plan will provide goals and recommendations for any future development, and as I said before, will be an open and transparent process.
Can I ask a quick question?
Thanks.
To assess the future needs of the wild campus, who defines those needs?
So there are, there, there's a standard. So when, when we do the, the comprehensive review, we're looking at land use, we're looking at transportation, economics, demographics, environment. And we look at all of the, sort of the base information, and then there's an extensive visioning process where we work with residents. In this case, we would be working with the, the, the folks who are, you know, the Washington Adventist folks. And City Council, city staff. So it, it, the entire process is designed to get as much input and feedback on what those needs and expectations and, and sort of ideas for the future are. Okay, so the, in 2019. Okay, so the in 2019, the County Council passed the Racial Equity and Social Justice Act to actively address racial disparities in the county. And it requires the Planning Board to consider racial equity and social justice impacts when preparing a master plan. So all of the the plan process elements that I just talked about will all be will all be implemented through a lens of equity. And I know that the city has its own similar ordinance. And so we will be building on that to to make the best recommendations that we can. So to sort of help to 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 help us be better partners to each other. We've been working with the City Manager and Roz to prepare a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Planning Department. And this MOU, which was signed, I think, earlier today, defines it and coordinates roles and responsibilities between the city and the Planning Department. It defines a process and schedule, and we'll be going over both of those. It introduces the Communications and Outreach Plan, which will be a sort of a living document that will be developing as a sort of after the kickoff and the initial phase of the plan. And then also establishes of the primary points of contact, which, as I mentioned before, will be Roz for the city and Leslie for the department. So so the roles, I tend to not like to have too much text on a slide, but I thought in this case, it would be helpful, this is taken straight from the MOU for folks who may not have had a chance to read it, that under the MOU, the Planning Department will be the lead agency in the administration, engagement, development, quality assurance and production of all the deliverables for the plan through all the phases of the planning process. And the city will provide support and collaborate in the engagement, development, quality assurance and production of all deliverables for the plan. Planning and City Staff will brief the City Council at key milestones. Prior to be from the Planning Board and Planning Staff and City Staff will be coordinating regularly during the process with ongoing, I think initially biweekly meetings and, you know, certainly more as necessary.
Can you give an example of a milestone?
So that that is an excellent question, and it leads right into this, right into this next table. So the so the we have the phase, the deliverables, and then the schedule. I'm sorry, I'm I'm blocking yourself. Can I make that go away? Go away. Hey, look at that. Okay, so we're right now in sort of the the pre kickoff. So we've added this briefing to the MOU. So the next phase is the the kickoff, and that starts really in the next couple of weeks. And the Community Engagement and Communications Plan. Sorry, what time is it? It's eight. So I'll try, I'll try and speak through that. So so the the scope of work would really be the first milestone. I'd actually have to turn the lights off in the in the room for it to stop. So the scope of work and plan area boundary report will be the first milestone. And we will come to you with, so we're going to work with with Roz and come up with a recommended plan boundary and and then coming back to you at the scope of work to get your comments before we present it to the Planning Board. So that's April or and May of this year. And and we we put the anticipated schedule in there to show that this is sort of a, this is a long term project. We're looking at at a couple of years before we're we're done with it. It's a very extensive project. So after kickoff, we do existing conditions research. We're starting the community engagement based on the Community Engagement and Communications Plan. We'll do an existing conditions analysis report and then present all of that. And you and you'll sort of see these next three pieces are come into sort of each phase where, in addition to getting input from the community and answering community questions, we present each of the each of the the sort of deliverables at the milestone. We present them to the community and then to the City Council and then to the Planning Board. So that'll run more or less through the end of the year. Roughly starting in December through sort of the spring of 2020 will be the visioning and the visioning phase and development of preliminary recommendations. Again, more community engagement, looking, so in existing conditions, we're sort of getting ideas of how people sort of where people see the current situation for the 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 plan area and what they like about it and what they don't like about it, what they'd like to see, what they wouldn't like to see. And then in in the community engagement for visioning, it's much more focused about, you know, where, you know, where are we looking for, you know, new development or new parks or new schools or new whatever? It's the 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 looking for the changes. That's that's really the focus of the community engagement in visioning and development of the preliminary preliminary recommendations. So we take the feedback that we get and will put together a presentation of sort of what we heard and what our our thoughts are in terms of preliminary recommendations. And again, present to the community, to the City Council and to the Planning Board. Then the next step is the staff working draft plans. So if the visioning and preliminary recommendations presentation are more of an outline in the staff working draft, we're actually working on the the plan itself. So the, you know, the the background, you know, all of the text, the background research, any information, the 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 vision, you know, the written out vision for the plan, so that the the there's an actual plan document that is then presented to the community, again, the Council and to the Planning Board. And then, once we have the whole plan, then we have work sessions. And so we'll we'll present to the City Council and the Planning Board and have enough work sessions that sort of the the city's issues have been addressed. And so and similarly with the Planning Board, you know, work sessions can focus on topic areas. They can, you know, transportation or environmental recommendations or equity recommendations or land use recommendations or or whatever they are, or they could, they could focus on a geographic area. So there's, you know, there's flexibility, but the idea is to, you know, look at the specific language in the the plan. And if if the City Council or Planning Board want to make changes to the specific language, then that's done during that stage. When the City Council and the Planning Board are comfortable that the 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 plan document is, you know, it is, is in a good place, the recommendations are sound, the necessary issues have been addressed and considered, then the staff working draft plan will become the public hearing draft. So as part of the comprehensive process that I talked about before, there are a number of public hearings that are required. And and the first is at the Planning Board. So the the document is set as a public hearing draft. It's posted online and advertised in newspapers. And there's a 30 day period, and then there's a public hearing. And anybody who's interested can come and provide comments to the 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 Planning Board during the public hearing. And then all of those comments are documented. And then there are there are sorry, there are more work sessions to address those comments, again, until the the Planning Board is is satisfied that it that all of the comments have been sufficiently addressed. And then Planning Board, it becomes a Planning Board Draft Plan, which then goes to the County Council. The County Council has their own public hearing that follows a similar format. And then the County Council Committees will have work sessions and the 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 will, you know, propose changes. And then the full council will review and then ultimately, you know, approve a minor master plan amendment document that that meets everybody's needs. Once the, once the the County Council approves the plan, then it is approved and adopted by it's the plan is approved by the Council and adopted by the Commission, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, which is sort of the final step for the document. And then we enter into the sectional map amendment process, which is where the 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 zoning is changed. I should say, if there were, if there were changes to the zoning code, let's say that there was an overlay zone that was to be created as part of the master plan amendment. Zoning changes would typically happen with Council approval as part of that. So then, once all of the, once the the plan's done, the sectional map amendment is what changes the zoning designations on each of the properties. So we prepare all of the maps showing the old zoning and the new zoning. We staff requests Planning Board's approval to file a sectional map amendment. And then that goes to the County Council. There will be a public hearing on the sectional map amendment, any work sessions. And then, once the sectional map amendment is approved by the Council and the full commission, then the zoning maps are changed. So we're looking for sort of the final plan, sort of, let's, you know, June of 2023, and then another, another two or three months for the zoning to be in place. So that's the schedule. I've said a lot, and there's a lot there. But basically, we'll just take it one step at a time. And, you know, we'll be meeting with Roz every other week. And, you know, we will have community engagement throughout this process.
Did he freeze for everybody? Yes.
Okay.
I think he did.
Wow.
We will have community engagement.
Oh, you're back. You froze, Elsa, right when you said community engagement.
Yeah, so the, so there there will be, there'll be a lot of community engagement and up through visioning. And then when we get to the, I had to minimize the images so that I could see my slides. When when we get to the staff working draft, then we kind of close in a little bit because we you know, it it's a lot of work. So we will continue, of course, to be working with City Staff, but there won't be as much public engagement because it takes a lot of work to get all of the things that we have heard, sort of through all of our engagement efforts and all of the visioning and get it into a document that sort of holds together, that presents a vision that has, you know, a clear concise vision and has, you know, clear goals and and clear implementation strategies that takes a bit of, that takes a bit of doing. So we'll cocoon a little bit. And then, once we've got something reasonable, we'll we'll pop back out. Any questions on on that? We're almost done. I think I I maybe have one or two more slides.
Yeah, I got a a quick question. Sir, you have the community engagement. This is a private parcel owned by a private landlord. During this process, if what the public wants varies from what the landlord wants, how do you weigh those two?
Sure, that's an excellent question. And and I should, I should point out that, you know, the the Washington and Venice Hospital will not be the only property covered by this plan. There will be many property owners covered in the, you know, we have, we don't know what the plan boundary is, but we know it's going to be more than the hospital. And so, you know, it is, you know, it 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 it's the negotiation, it's a balance. You know, there are not only sort of the, the, you know, the the desires and and hopes of property owners and residents, but then there may also be limit, you know, there are, there could be, I think there will be practical limitations in terms of, you know, you know, transportation environment, you know, that will all be sort of, will all be looked at at the same time. So the answer that who decides first, you know, staff will make, will staff will will make a judgment and then the Council, then the City Council. You all will essentially be reviewing all of the recommendations that are in the plan that are certainly, in some cases, going to be there, you know, are going to be competing. And then the Planning Board and then the Council. And so we, you know, the importance of having the open and transparent and sort of, you know, step by step process that's documented and and all the information is there is to, you know, look at all of these properties from all of the necessary angles and, you know, weigh weigh the different options. And, you know, from the the plan will be recommending, it'll be recommending, you know, potentially new zoning for for existing properties. It it could be, in addition to zoning, it could be making more qualitative recommendations for development on a particular site. It'll be making recommendations for public rights of way. Are they too wide? Are they too narrow? It is so there are, there are many things that the plan will be weighing. And and I mean, really, that's why it takes so long. It is that there there's a lot to, there's a lot to process.
And so, yeah, that's, that's fine. And so because it's a private landlord, do they have a special status in the process?
So, I mean, they, so all property owners, you know, are engaged in every sector plan we do. So but they don't have veto authority. The, you know, as I said, it's, you know, ultimately, the County Council that will approve the recommendations for particular sites, including new zoning, including what the language says. So, you know, it it's a, it's a political process ultimately. I mean, there's certainly sort of, you know, there's the staff's best professional judgment and all of the analysis that we do. You know, but there are also then policy priorities. So, you know, we we reach out to the property owners just as we reach out to to the neighbors and and residents to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, to make sure that they understand what's at stake. It's, it's difficult to get zoning changed on a property if the zoning's not working for what they want to do. And if, you know, if we're, if we're opening a section, sorry, if we're opening a section of, you know, the Tacoma Park Master Plan, this is really the time to do it. So we do reach out to them so that they are aware of what's at stake. But in the process, I mean, we we take everybody's, we take everybody's thoughts and concerns into account.
And then one final question. You you talked about the environment as a bucket that you you look at. Are you guys anticipating what climate change means, not today, but five years from now, 10 years from now, and how that could impact this, these parcels?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, the where that has probably taken sort of the 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 largest center stage with the the Thrive Montgomery General Plan Update and looking at at resilience and and all of that will inform, you know, the the recommendations that that we're making. Some of the things that, you know, other plans, the the Bethesda Downtown Plan had, you know, a high efficiency zone where, you know, higher had, you know, a, a high efficiency zone where, you know, higher energy efficiency standards were required. So there are a number of, you know, there, there are tree canopy recommendations so that when developers come in to develop a site, the sector plan can have recommendations about tree cover. And, and so I think there are, there are a lot of tools that are available to us and we're always looking for more. So we will absolutely be taking that into, into account.
I just, I lied. I kept one quick one. If the transfer of the property happens before the ma- master plan is complete, and we suspect that that will occur, can the university get sometime, some type of exception, an exemption from the future master plan because they are an education institution?
So, I mean, the, so the, the sector plan recommendations are going to apply to the property sort of regardless of who owns them. The, the, the text may be specific to, you know, a, a particular use. I think if, you know, if there was, there, there are ways to provide flexibility. For example, in, in Bethesda, there's a single family neighborhood sort of on the southern end of the Central Business District, the Saks neighborhood that was interested, that there was enough interest in the neighborhood. You know, they're essentially a single family neighborhood. There was enough interest to potentially upzone the neighborhood for property owners that were interested in, in, you know, cooperating with the developer to go from single families to townhouses or apartments or whatever, that the sector plan allowed for a floating zone. So a floating zone is, is a way to sort of, in a way, take a rain check. So the zoning isn't changed at the sector plan timed, but can be changed later. So there are options. Depending on what folks want to do, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of tools and a lot of options to, to explore.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Siemens has a question.
A follow-up question on the, the zoning changes. Zoning change can significantly increase or decrease the value of the property. I wonder, especially in the, in the latter case, how that works.
In the case of the Saks neighborhood?
In the case of a neighborhood that is, zoning is changed, it actually decreases the value of the property.
Well, so in the case of the Saks neighborhood, so I think the, the, the general assessment would be that, you know, if it was rezoned from single family to multifamily, that, you know, that, that could potentially actually raise the value, maybe not necessarily of, of the land, but of the, of the improvements on the land, you know, you'd make more money on a multifamily building than you would on three single family houses. There is a certain amount of economic analysis that is done. And I think honestly, we, so we, we focus on, and, and we have options. And I think it, you know, the guidance from, when we get to that point, guidance from the, the, the city would be helpful. But we certainly look at demographic, economic information. You know, we've also done studies to look at, you know, if economic development is not happening in a master plan area, then there can also be sort of economic studies that are related to to exploring why that may or may not happen. So, you know, the, the tools we have at the end in terms of, in terms of property value are, you know, the, the zone, the density that's permitted in the zone that's recommended and the language in the plan. So if the, if the, if the density is a more quantitative assessment of, of what can be done on a site, it's sort of, it's qualitative companion is the, the descriptive language of the recommendations in the plan. So it, it's very common to sort of go, you know, particularly for larger properties, property by property, and say, this is what we're recommending for the new zoning to be, and this is why. And these are the kinds of things that we're trying to achieve by recommending this property or this zoning for this property.
And Councilmember Siemens, this is Robert. I, you know, to maybe add on to what Elsa said, we don't really see too many situations where a property is downzoned. But what, what we have done and what we have seen through any zoning changes that occur in plans is that the zones that are put on those plans or on those sites and properties are a little bit more flexible in nature, meaning that there's more deference given to the market to say, if they want to go with a commercial or a residential type of project for that site, we try to have a zone that would accommodate. Because these plans can be 10 to 15 to 20 years before we touch them again. And so you need to have something that's going to be able to respond to the market conditions. So hopefully that answers, you know, from Elsa's, what he mentioned to you. And then I guess what I'm saying, hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. And just one last question. Yeah, I was on the, the committee for the last time, the Tacoma Park was, went through the master plan process. And it was an extremely large committee. And I just wondered if we have any, even though we haven't been through that, the planning process for a community, do you have a ballpark of what we might expect as far as how many people for a, a kind of a subset of a master plan that's this big?
I'm sorry, when you say, so the, if, if I understand your question correctly, we in the past have had citizen advisory committees. And is that where it's sort of a smaller group of citizens? You know, in, in more recent plans, we've not used those in favor of a more robust public engagement strategy to, to sort of, again, reach the folks who have not traditionally been reached. And, you know, to really have like that very robust engagement. So I think one of the, one of the questions I think to be answered as part of the communications plan, which was going to be developed as part of the sort of in advance of the scope of work is, you know, do we want, you know, what do we, what do we think we want and, and need in terms of how the, you know, in terms of outreach and coordination with the community, what's, what's the best approach? So I think that's something that we can discuss.
And, and I think to add to that, in, in some cases for master plans, we have community organizations or CACs that, that, that evolve because of the master plan and are very integral into making recommendations. And I think that, that goes to Councilmember Smith's questions that you had about, you know, what do you do when you, when you have differing opinions on what a zone or what kind of recommendations would be? Sometimes those CACs or those community groups help with that. But I think since we have a city council, we have a planning board, we have a county council, a very robust engagement strategy in place. I think we're going to get quite a bit of feedback and to, to give us and to inform us, I think, on the best kind of recommendations. But we've gone both ways when it comes to community, community groups that are formed as part of this or community action groups that, that provide guidance. White Flint was probably one of the better ones because I, you know, that was, that was organized, I think, in concert with our process and with the county planning staff and the, and the county council as well. And it was very helpful, very beneficial. I think with Bethesda, we had a group that evolved from that plan as well, that became very involved with not only the recommendations, but continued through that process to become very involved with the implementation of the plan. So a- again, I think that that's up for discussion, but, and, and we haven't ruled anything out in terms of community participation. So I think, you know, we're, we're still, we're still kind of in the gathering phases on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Devalla.
Yes, thank you. This has been really interesting. I had gone into this thinking about the question of an updated master plan overall, as opposed to a piece of Tacoma Park. What I think I heard you say, besides the obvious, that there's, there's a big piece of property here that's about to change hands, which is unusual for our city, but also that two of the other rapidly changing areas, Langley and Tacoma, Tacoma, Langley and and Long Branch have already had minor master plans done. Is there some kind of schedule by which you go through master plans over a 20, 25 year period? Whatever, with this substitute for an eventual look at the whole city or what's your, what are your thoughts on that?
Robert, you handled that from a sort of department viewpoint?
Yes. So we keep a, so each area team and even our functional planning team, which looks at countywide policies and practices and plans. Every year we evaluate, you know, what should be on our work program. And we have conversations with, you know, other jurisdictions, with other departments and with, with county council about what those priorities would be in the county. There's no real magic timeline for updating the plan. We have some plans that are 10 years old, 15 years old, some that are up to 30. Typically, our plans look out about 20 years. But I think what we've seen recently is that the plans that, that get approved, there's a, there's a, a very rapid turnaround in terms of how that plan responds to the market. And I, you know, with, even with Silver Spring, when that plan was approved in 2000, we had a considerable amount of new development and new activity going on in Silver Spring. Bethesda's the same way. I think we're, you know, we've seen that in Chevy Chase. Some of this is in Down County, but we've seen it all throughout the county. So there's no real magic timeline for it, but I do believe that what we are seeing is, is probably a revisit of this 20 year timeline to something that's probably more between the 10 and the 15 year timeline. But keeping in mind that it takes two years to get a, you know, a plan through the process. So by the time you're done with that, you know, you, the, the cumulative time after that is probably what we would be looking at. But we reevaluate our schedule every year and look at the priorities, both from our perspective and other jurisdictions. You know, whether it's the city of Tacoma, whether it's Gaithersburg and some of the smaller areas and kind of put all that in perspective of what our work program should be.
And this, the, my other question is, thank you. My other question is about, this is ultimately about the zoning categories, not about this, the the setbacks, the heights, limitations, et cetera, that are, that, that are the definition of a zoning category.
So that, that's correct, but I, you know, one thing I would, right, one thing I would like to say is not all of our plans that we do have zoning changes to them. We're working on the Rustic Roads Functional Plan, which is a master plan, and that will not have any zoning changes to it. So we may come out of this plan and there may be sites that, you know, the city, the staff, the council says, no, we don't want to change the zoning on those. But we might want to make recommendations based on the current zone that's there. You know, whether that should support maybe affordable housing or it should support other cultural resources or certain environment or transportation needs. So, you know, I, I think master plans definitely are an avenue and a conduit for zoning changes. But in some cases, that is not the case for some of the sites that we look at.
Well, and, and also, as I mentioned before, you know, each, each of the, so each zone is going to have its own development standards in terms of setbacks and height and density and all of that. But the, the site-specific recommendations in the plan, you, you could have a large site that's recommended for density and the sector plan could say that, you know, the site should also accommodate a park or that the bulk of the density should be located along this major road or on that part of the site. So there is, even beyond the, sort of the zoning designations and the requirements that are sort of part of that, that the qualitative can really get, you know, can get fairly specific in terms of, you know, big sort of bigger picture design issues in addition to policy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to everybody from the county staff for the presentation. I just had a few questions. One of them is what, if anything, can happen between now and when the process that you outlined is completed? So in other words, can there be development on the former Wa campus now or in the next year? We had a presentation, a separate presentation the other day, and we'll be hearing more about this on this COG Grand Lake Gopher potential redesign of portions of Maple Avenue that are close to the site. So can those things go forward even while this is being figured out? Or is there a kind of an understanding that things should stay put while this is figured out?
So I think generally speaking, until, you know, until the new zoning is in place, the current zoning is in place. And so we have, I think, in, in Bethesda and I think potentially even in Silver Spring, you have property owners whose current zoning meets their needs. They're not looking for any additional, anything, they're going to move under the, the zoning and, and master plan provisions that, that are essentially the old plan. So the, I think for the Washington and Venice campus, if I recall correctly, it's zoned for single family housing. And so, you know, any, as any other single family zoned property in the county, you know, the, a property owner can apply for, you know, a, you know, a use that's allowed on the site, they could apply for a conditional use, they could provide, they could request, oh, you know, they could actually request a local map amendment, they could, they could request a smaller rezoning. You know, we would generally probably discourage that because from, because, and those come through us as staff because we think that it's essential to, you know, to have the comprehensive review of the area in order to, to consider. But, I mean, I, I think that the main thing, and, and I think it's still in, in the subdivision ordinance, is that once there's a public hearing draft, that the planning board can decide not to approve new subdivisions in the plan area. So that's sort of the closest that we get, and even then, it's, it's a may, not a must. That's the closest that we get to sort of putting things on hold from, you know, a more official standpoint.
So there's nothing literally stopping something from still going forward during the time? And just, you may sort of say to somebody, you should be aware that this bigger discussion is happening.
I, I think a good, maybe a good analogy to that, Councilmember Kovar, is that we were, and Melissa's here as well, she worked on the Forest Glen Montgomery Hills Plan. And we had Montgomery Housing Partnership come to us when that plan was really far along. And they had purchased a site and that was subject to some of the tax credits and, or low income tax credits. And so they needed to act on it because I think the building had gone into disrepair and was deemed unfit. And so they needed to take action on it right then. And so that was pretty clear to staff and to our planning board that, you know, yes, this is not the normal course of action for them to go through a process for new development, but they needed to do something with that property right away. Other than, otherwise it would have been a major problem, I think, from a welfare stand, health and welfare standpoint.
Okay, thank you. And, and so, Elsa, you mentioned this, so the scope, geographical scope of the plan isn't yet determined and that will be determined through this process is going to take place. And the information that I saw for, for this city council agenda item, it talked about not only the literal site of Washington Venice Hospitals campus, but also the university campus portions of Maple Avenue, et cetera, and maybe some further areas further afield. So when those are mentioned, is that really just the starting point to get the conversation going? We don't know for sure. Or are there some parts is like, well, that's definitely going to be part of it, and these other parts might be? Or are there some parts is like, well, that's definitely going to be part of it. These other parts might be, if that makes any sense to phrase it that way.
Sure. So I, I think, you know, the, the, it was, it was city staff and Washington Venice Hospital, Washington, Washington, I guess, University folks who approached the planning department to say, hey, you know, we have this, you know, the, the hospital's moving and we have this asset in our community that is limited by the current zoning. You know, would this be a candidate for this more comprehensive look? And so I, I think it's generally, I think it's generally accepted that the, that the Washington Venice University and hospital campus would be part of the plan. That's not, you know, until, until the planning board approves the planned boundary, really everything's up in the air. I mean, with the, if any of you were paying attention to the Silver Spring Plan, you know, our staff went to the planning board and said, well, we're planning on using, you know, the, the, the central business district bounty for the plan. We're going to cover the same areas. And, you know, the planning board members said, well, we'd actually like you to look at expanding the planned boundary into the single family neighborhoods to explore the potential for missing middle housing. And so then we, you know, we went back to the drawing board and came up with options. I don't think any of us were expecting, were expecting that. And so, you know, we will, you know, I, I think some of the things you mentioned are things that, that have been presented to us as, as places in the, the city to, to add, you know, I think looking at, you know, there are a lot of considerations that go into what the planned boundary should be. And, you know, we'll have a fulsome discussion for what that is in terms of how far, you know, how far it goes and how far it doesn't go. And, you know, the plans can have very broad scopes, they can have very narrow scopes. When, when I, I led the Chevy Chase Lake Sector Plan for the Purple Line Station and the planned boundary was drawn fairly tight around the, around the, the station site. So there were a lot of, you know, single family communities that were not included in that. So I think there's, there's a lot to consider and, and a lot to discuss there.
Okay, one last question, and thank you for the information. So we have our tree policy, and that's something just for the city. So does that automatically get incorporated into this? Because this is all work that would be happening within city boundaries?
I'm, I'm sorry, you, you broke up when you were describing what it was.
Tree, our, our tree policy, our tree ordinance and so on. Does that automatically apply to anything that would happen through this process?
I mean, so, you know, the, the, the tree, the city tree ordinance applies to any development project in the city just as the state forest conservation requirements apply to any project of the state. So the, the, the sector plan, at least in my experience generally won't, you know, it, it, it could, in, you know, it could in theory make general recommendations about changes to those, but those programs wouldn't be directly impacted by the, the sector plan, but, but the, the, the plan amendment could have, could have goals that build on the, the, the city's tree policy in terms of, you know, expanding tree canopy or, you know, other things may be related to, to climate resilience. So I think those are, those types of ordinances are going to be, they're going to be part of the discussion. They're certainly going to impact the, you know, any development projects that, that come out, but they won't be directly impacted by the plan recommendations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great. I'm not seeing any other hands up. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I, I do have another question. In, in the presentation, you talked about economic development is a factor. So, you know, people, whether it's a developer, business people say that, you know, Montgomery County for the last 10 years has not created any new jobs, right? How would you say planning, changing zoning has anything to do with that? Or creating jobs is a completely separate market activity? And another part of that is affordable housing, which people claim that that's something that zoning can, can be the silver bullet and, and, and help create all this affordable housing. But if you look at Montgomery County's housing, it's still very expensive. So can you address those two things?
Sure. So, you know, I, I think in terms of economic development, if master plans were the key to economic development, I don't think we would have any budget, any budget issues. I think we, we certainly recognize that, that master plans, and I think the general plan, the, the Thrive Montgomery is also looking at addressing this, that what plans can do is try and try to think of ways using land use and zoning and sector plan recommendations to sort of feather, feather the nest and make, you know, make the, you know, make an area more walkable, more transit accessible. You know, to, to, you know, figure out how to use the existing affordable housing tools available to us, trying to think about how to create some more in order to promote, you know, redevelopment in a way that is attractive to businesses, that is attractive to, to, you know, to office users, to, you know, to, to residents, to, you know, potentially a university campus. So I, I think, you know, it, it's not, so in, in, in Bethesda, there was an economic analysis, you know, looking at, you know, where the retail in Bethesda, for example, should be focused. And one of, but the issues in Bethesda was that there was too much retail. And so that impacted the, the, the commercial density recommendations for those properties, for, you know, what are the better sites for, you know, office uses as opposed to, you know, areas where residential might be more appropriate. And so there are zoning tools to, again, sort of, you know, adjust the, 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 the environment in the sense of, of the, you know, the conditions to, to try and sort of attract those residents, attract those businesses. Bethesda increased, the Bethesda Downtown Plan increased the minimum affordable housing requirement from 12 and a half percent NPDUs to 15% NPDUs. And while that's not, you know, it would be likely to be higher maybe, but, you know, it is, it was a way to use zoning to require more affordable housing in a way that was you know, friendly to economic development. So, you know, I'll, I'll defer to, to, to Robert or Leslie or Melissa or John if they have other thoughts. But I, I think from my perspective, it is, you know, there are, there are limits to the tools we have. We're always looking for more tools, but I think, you know, there are opportunities for us to be creative, to make areas more attractive.
I, I think that's right. And I think the master plan, one of the things that it does is it helps set priorities on what, what's important to, to that, that area where the master plan covers. And whether it's affordable housing, whether it's the commercial base. And of course, that really helps inform what happens within that area. So I, I don't really have a whole lot more to add to that.
Anything else? Terrific. Well, before your clock goes off again, Elsie.
I did have, I think I did have just a couple more. Just one more. That's right. We have 16 minutes. Yeah, you, you guys are welcome to borrow my clock if you want to, if you want to shorten your meetings. Okay. So really this is the last slide that the next steps are, you know, we're, we're kicking off. We're kicking off in the next couple of weeks internally, starting to meet with Roz. And we'll start doing our background research. You know, the next time really you'll see us will probably be for the study area and plan boundary options. And then we'll be working with city staff to put together the communications plan and the public outreach and engagement plan. So there's a lot of work to do. We are, we are very excited to be doing it. We're very excited to, to work with you all. I had just moved, I moved, I just moved into the city right after the last master plan was, was completed. And so I'm, I'm, I'm very excited to, to, as a, as a resident as well, get this project started. And like I said, we look forward to working with Roz and, and all the staff and at the city and all of you. And we'll be back in front of you before you know it.
Great. Thank you so much. I had a quick question for Roz. Are we going to start a project page on the city website for this? So that we'll have Elsie, the presentation from tonight and everything. So if people are looking for it.
We will. We have a draft of it already. I just needed another set of eyes on it before I published it. So it'll be up tomorrow.
Awesome. Perfect. Great. Well, thank you all, and we appreciate you coming out tonight and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Yeah. Take care.
Bye.
Bye bye.
All right, great. Um, all right, moving on now, we have public comments, and I don't believe we have two voting items tonight, but we did not have public comments on voting items. And the first person I had listed here was Julie Bodie. Is she still with us?
Ms. Bodie is not with us right now.
All right, if she comes back, I will highlight her name. How about Mr. Hubner?
He's here.
All right, great.
He should be here. Yeah.
Excuse me, I was confused by the way you set it up. Are you ready for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Paul Hubner, Ward three. I amended my presentation after I heard the mayor. First, as we, I want to talk about three issues tonight. First, as we approach the public engagement part of the Tacoma Junction process, I want to ask the council to please conscientiously follow its, its commitment to public engagement with adequate and widespread public notice. That's the first thing. I amended that because it was redundant. Secondly, the present junction project is overwhelmed by so many serious issues that I want to assert this is not the right development, nor the right developer. I'll list a few problems. The enormous size and height of the proposed building. The lack of real access for parking and dumpsters on a lot. The acknowledged stormwater calamity for nearby neighbors where NDC's own data reveals that only about a third of the storm water would be treated for a one-year storm and nearly 18% for a storm, the size of which we had within the last two years. There is a lack of any real public space on a lot purchased by taxpayer money. And the disastrous unsafe layby already acknowledges failing county regulations for safety and the massive volume of traffic that will drive into the nearby residential streets. This project is also an existential danger to the co-op. The layby will strangle the co-op by choking off safe and efficient deliveries, customer parking, and by clogging the street during trash removal. When council members were first polled about what they wanted as priorities for the new development, the co-op was in the first three of the top five priorities for every council member. Now the co-op, its members and users, as well as its workers, face an existential threat in the lack of sufficient public parking and tractor trailer access. Finally, I would like to point out the seeming duplicity of the city manager when she states in a March 11th letter to S H A that, quote, "As state highway officials have acknowledged, a layby is the only way to safely accommodate deliveries for the co-op," end quote. Where is the evidence showing this was acknowledged by S H A? I'm also concerned about what I consider the very misleading assertion by the city manager regarding the current unsafe conditions at the junction parking lot. The lot has worked for decades without observable problems. Yet now during a critical period before the S H A rulings and those of the county, the city manager weighs in, calling this a safety problem. It appears that Ms. Ledlow has decided on the project before the final plan and objective professional analysis. And this seems to me a breach of ethics and of her fiduciary duty. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Let's see, next we have Robert Anderson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jesse, would you please put on my?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, jumpstarted the clock there. Didn't mean to. Okay.
I've been jumpstarted before. Okay. Strangely enough, I have some of the same comments that, that Mr. Hubner had. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You received my email about city allegations on safety issues at the junction. One is delivery trucks are backing out of the city lot onto traffic into 410. Another is the layby is a safe alternative for deliveries. Next. Montgomery County Department of Transportation states the layby violates county code and has safety issues. And here's a citation for that. Next. The city has also stated that trucks are making left turns illegally across double yellow lines into and out of the lot. Per Maryland code, these turns are not illegal. Next. Then there's a suggestion that cars should only make right turns into and out of the lot. Entering traffic could only come from the west and exiting traffic could only go east. Next. To come from the east, a driver would have to go west of the lot and turn around somewhere to come back east. There's a similar distance dance for exiting drivers who want to go west. All this creates neighborhood cut-throughs and additional pollution from wandering vehicles. Next. This all seems like solutions in search of a problem. You and the city manager have received these questions that follow before. Next. Is there really an ongoing safety issue? Are there traffic incidents at the?
Mr. Anderson?
I just got muted. I, I didn't get muted. I muted myself. I'm sorry.
All right, we'll give you a few more seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you. What incidents have there been? Next. If this is a significant problem, why is it just being brought up? Next. How have the police been involved in rectifying this alleged problem, if there is one? Next. A city document states that S H A says the layby is a safe delivery alternative. I've not been able to find that document. It would be helpful if the city could provide it. And why does the city continue to promote a layby that Montgomery County Department of Transportation has deemed unsafe and in violation of county code? You receive these questions like Monday evening. I would hope that the community can expect answers within a week, perhaps by next Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Great. Um, next we have Susan Miller.
Hi, you hear me? Good evening, Sue Miller, Ward three. I'm here tonight to urge the council to reclaim ownership of the junction process. The developer has written twice this month to the planning board lobbying to push the plan through next month. They are misrepresenting the process, the project, and our city with a series of inaccurate statements. Tonight, I'm going to focus on just one of those statements. In a March 8th letter to the planning board, the developer mischaracterizes the current plan as being, quote, "In all material respects, the same plan approved." The same plan approved by the city. First, as you all have reminded us, the city has not approved the plan. You simply voted to let the plan go through the county process. A process the developer is now attempting to influence. The city's approval awaits our upcoming thorough and public city council review. Second, the current plans are in fact not at all the same as the plans the city last reviewed. Almost three years ago now. I want to point out just some of the changes that have occurred in the plans since you last reviewed it. One, the developer failed to obtain air rights from surrounding businesses and was forced to reduce the size of the building. But added zero new public space. Two, public space appears to have actually shrunk to well below the city's required minimum. Three, the bike share and bus stop have been moved, reducing walkability and public transit friendliness. Four, the developer proposed closing off the co-op's four-ten entrance. Now, it appears this plan failed, but it speaks to total disregard for neighborhood traffic. And for your promise not to harm the co-op. Five, there will be no left turns in or out, instead sending traffic through side streets as Bob described. Six, they finally revealed the Columbia facade, causing anger and dismay in that neighborhood. And requiring special neighborhood meetings. And seven, the plan now appears to have stairs on the sidewalk, making the block less safe and less accessible. For wheelchairs, walkers, strollers, and the elderly. So a lot has changed. And now the council and residents must review it based on county and state findings, on the requirements we set out. On the post-pandemic economy and on, and on our commitments to climate, to racial equity. And to our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Arthur David Olson.
David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue on stormwater fees. Surprised to hear at last week's council meeting, the notion that a property owner's stormwater credit. Needed to be limited to fifty percent of their bill because of the need to fund the work required to handle runoff from public property. That seems to me to be inconsistent with what I've heard in the past. About the Maryland state requirement that fees must be related to the cost of what the fee is being charged for. Given that requirement, I'd expect that if a property owner somehow managed to eliminate all their runoff. They ought not be charged the stormwater fee. That said, public property runoff does need to be handled. A possible approach. If, to make the math easy, seventy-five percent of stormwater cost is due to private property. And twenty-five percent is due to public property. Set the stormwater fee so that the total collected fee covers seventy-five percent of the total cost. With twenty-five percent of the total cost coming from general revenues. Providentially, the council and Public Works Department have already determined that a property's share of total impervious area. Is a reasonably fair and workable measure of the property's share of stormwater cost. I'm confident that the Public Works Department has determined or can determine the total impervious area of public property. So the share of stormwater cost to be paid from general revenues can be readily found. Because this approach would reduce stormwater fees. A potential side benefit is that it might eliminate the need to cap those fees. I hope the council and the city manager will consider funding public property stormwater cost from general revenues. In this coming year's budget and going forward. And will not cap stormwater credits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jessica Landman.
Waiting for you to turn my, okay. Okay, see me and hear me now? Okay, good evening. Jessica Landman, Ward one. I'm here this evening to talk about the process that is unfolding for the city council's consideration of the revised site plan at the junction. And the reason I'm here today is because the developer has asked the planning board to consider their proposal next month. And actually told the planning board that the viability of this project is adversely affected if they're not able to do so. I have now confirmed that the project is indeed on the board's tentative calendar for late April, which is a month from now or less. Consideration by the planning board in late April would be totally unacceptable. Jesse, if you wouldn't mind putting up that page from the city website. I wanted to remind you why this timeline cannot possibly be appropriate. This spells out, if you look in the section that's labeled now, winter into spring for twenty to twenty-one. The council promised that once the revised design had been completed and the government review process had been completed. The city staff would review it and then we would have public hearings with meaningful chance for public comment. Before you adopt your resolution to the planning board stating whether Tacoma Park approves the project design. And we are expecting for those meaningful hearings to happen with the state and county experts who've rendered their opinions as well as N D C available. To answer questions and share their expertise. And obviously, this cannot be responsibly completed by the end of April. S H A's comments are not even complete, much less the city review. So allowing the project to go to the planning board for review without the city's review really is not an option. Even if the developer wants to do so, or the park and planning staff would agree, which I do not think they would. The city is a partner in this project. N D C should never have made a request to the board for review in April without consulting the city. Either N D C failed to inform the city manager, who is Tacoma Park's representative on this project, which would be unacceptable. Or she agreed to their request for April review by the board. That would be even worse. I ask for a clear answer. Will the city do as it has promised? Wait for county and state reviews to be completed? Then do its review, take a public comment, hold the hearings we've been promised before it drafts and adopts its resolution. If so, April consideration before the planning board is impossible. And an extension of time must be sought. Indeed, an extension of time rather than speedy consideration by the developer is what should have been sought in the first place. So I would ask you to determine whether the city manager knew about and approved of the developer attempting to short circuit. This long-promised public process or not. Thank you very much, I look forward to answers.
Thank you. Ms. Lam, I think, I don't know if you joined us at the beginning, but I did say that we're in the process of scheduling. The meetings for April and that this will come back to the city council before it goes to the planning board. Next, we have Esther Siegel.
Mayor Stewart, Julie Bodie has joined us.
Oh, okay, if Julie's here, why don't we do Julie next then? Thank you.
Well. I thought she had joined us. I did bring in Ms. Siegel, so she should be available.
Great, we'll go with Esther then.
Okay, am I unmute? Oh, I see. I see what you've. Okay, there we go, sorry about that. I'm gonna leave the details of why this junction project is just plain wrong for Tacoma Park to others better equipped to do so. Instead, I'm going to appeal to your heart and souls. This is a plea to schedule what Kate has already said, and so I hope that does go through. Jamie Raskin was asked by Seth Meyers if he felt the Republican senators were paying attention during the impeachment hearings. He said when he looked out into the audience, several of the Republican senators were studiously refusing to look at the camera. To see what actually did transpire during January sixth. He added, they were essentially closing their eyes to it. That's how I feel about those of you on the council who absolutely refuse to see what is right in front of you. At a recent presentation I attended, the Community Vision folks laid out a detailed, clear, illustrated, objective analysis. Of the many, many flaws in the project. The folks at C V are the kind of committed activists any reasonable elected official would want on their side. They do their homework and actually act on their commitment to the community. They really are not adversaries, they are allies. But you have turned a blind eye to not only their careful, methodical study of the development plan. But to constituents like me, who have been begging you to abandon this project. And yet stubbornly cling to this project for reasons that are so elusive to any reasonable eye. I beg you to take the time to view this thorough presentation about why this project is so flawed. I would like to see you address each of their claims in a presentation. That would be very helpful. You've been alerted more times than any of us can count about the critical concerns. Pedestrian cycling, safety, impact of the climate and storm water. The negative impact of traffic and residential streets, the clear threat to the co-op. And as you know, my husband delivers to the co-op and he knows the layby will deter many from delivering. The impact on small junction, I, I, I couldn't get on, so could I have a few more minutes, please? The impact on, on the junction and why on earth this current development project has any impact on racial equality? The pandemic has illuminated the need for outdoor and open public space. Clearly, the developer has not respected that requirement from the beginning. The pandemic has left millions of office space empty and businesses are realizing they don't need the space. Yet our esteemed city council wants to build office space. It reminds me of a story of Chalm, a village where elders entrusted to take care of the village are always amusingly misguided. In the story, the elders see the moon in the lake and spend an enormous amount of time devising plan after plan to capture the moon. For their village, their charming stories, but in the end, they see the light. Our story of the junction is neither charming nor amusing. Is there any prayer that would bring our city council to its senses and abandon this misguided effort to capture the moon? And as Jamie also said, we are, we had the attention of everyone who was paying attention. Which one are you? And I beg you to finally abandon this development and work organically with the community on the best use of our collectively owned property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Louise Guard.
Good evening, my name's Louise Guard and I wanted to share with you. My family has lived in Tacoma Park for sixty-two years. I recently received a violation from Mrs. Johnson with the Neighborhood Services.
Hello? I'm sorry, Ms. Siegel, I think you're still, we can still hear you. Thank you. Could the city clerk just start the clock again? Ms. Guard, please take your time, you can start over again. It was, that was distracting, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to say, my name's Louise Guard and I, my family has lived in Tacoma Park for sixty-two years. I recently received a violation from Mrs. Johnson with the Neighborhood Services. And it stated that I had rubbish on my porch. My stuff is not rubbish. As directed, I called Rick first thing, explaining to him that we were remodeling and had a few things going on in our home. He said he didn't agree with me and I had been told what I should be doing with my property. This led, led me and my husband to receiving a five hundred dollar fine. Each one of us totaling one thousand dollars for having things on our porch. We are living in a pandemic and I cannot afford this. Plus it has put added stress in my household. Do not have an H O A. But is, but we pay very high taxes. I have no back pork, porch or nothing in my backyard to put anything, to, to put any of my property. I have so many neighbors in my neighborhood that have things on their property. I have thrown all my stuff in the trash to please the city. Who decides what I'm allowed to have on my porch? I don't know. Very disappointed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for coming on tonight.
Yeah.
Great, Julie, you're up next.
Okay, it's just a quick word. I want to support as much as I can the Community Vision process. And thank you for the time.
Great, thanks Julie. Next, we have Nadine Block.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, city council and mayor for taking my, my points, Nadine in Ward three. And I'm also one of the people here to actually hold or remind the city. What they have promised since twenty eighteen, when the city approved not the building of the junction project. But to send it through the whole process of review. And now we're here at the time when we should be doing a really thorough, independent, meaningful public review by the city council. And all the things that have been mentioned. And I want to really emphasize that it seems critical that we're entering, you know, this ninety-nine year deal. To re-figure the last piece of public property in downtown Tacoma Park. With a lot of new pieces of information as we approach this review process. I'm encouraged to hear that there will be one scheduled, but it's really hard to imagine that one meeting would be enough. To actually adequately address the number of issues that have come up in almost three years. As was mentioned, since twenty eighteen, when it's, when this decision to move forward with the review came to bay. So I'm hoping that you will consider all these things, particularly in light of the pandemic. Any of the post-pandemic economic issues that are arising, whether it's, you know, unused office space. So reportedly, one of the bids downtown DC reported fifty percent unoccupied office space right now. And the issues with closing retail and upscale places that rely on indoor business. We need to think about how it will affect all the businesses in the junction and the racial equity effects of the proposal, of course. Given the fact that rents are likely to rise, that businesses are losing spaces and that our longstanding community of color. Has a number of businesses in the junction. Of course, there's the other commitments of Tacoma Park to racial equity and our using of our guidelines. That should be, as well as with the county, should be included in this review. And it should, of course, include the climate and the environmental commitments. I was really heartened to hear some of the questions, particularly from Councilmember Smith. Earlier about what the environmental and climate impacts of rezoning might be. And of course, it includes things like stormwater and the amount of runoff from increased storms that we're experiencing. And we need to include all the issues on safety and accessibility with Vision Zero, all the traffic issues. And frankly, it's really inappropriate for N D C to make a demand since they've identified no tenants. Not an anchor tenant or any other tenant to move into this building at this time. So please, we need to do an independent analysis, there needs to be plenty of time and it needs to be trustworthy. Especially given the considerations for what the city manager has said and hidden recently. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I just want to clarify, I didn't say one meeting, I said I was scheduling meetings in the month of April. So just to clarify, I did say plural meetings in the month of April, thank you. Andrew Strong is next, thanks.
I'm here, is the camera gonna come on? Yes, no, maybe so? Well, anyway, can, can you folks hear me?
One, just, Ms. Strong, please wait one second as the city clerk does it, does.
Yeah. Mr. Strong, I think you should be able to turn your camera on, is that not working?
Uh, let's take a look. But I'm used to running these things not being run. Anyway, good evening, thank you very much for your time to address you folks. I am here once again to address the question of governance. We all, I think, can agree on this call. that we are recovering still and will continue to recover for some time on a four-year assault on the facts that we experienced during the Trump administration. It was a terrible, terrible time for those of us who care about reason, logic, and decency. So we got through that and here we are. And I find myself in the city of Tacoma Park, where I have been for a long, long time, having to plead and cajole this council to ensure that when it acts on this plan for the Junction, that it does so on the basis of facts. I don't, I can't begin to understand why I have to do this, but here I am. And I'm here because, let's just see, you've heard the facts already. I'm going to repeat some of this. On March 10, the city manager told you and the public that the lay-by is the only means for the co-op to receive deliveries that meet transportation safety standards. It's just not true, and she knows that because she had in her possession the letter from the Department of Transportation saying the exact opposite, saying that the lay-by is unsafe and illegal. The next day, she wrote to State Highway and told State Highway's District Three office that's going to make the review that State Highway officials acknowledged that the lay-by is the only way to safely accommodate deliveries. Well, I don't believe it, and so I emailed State Highway and I have an email from them from last night telling me they didn't say that. They never said that. I have no idea who said that. So as we get on to this public process in April, that somehow will be fulsome, as we're being promised, I hope that this council remembers and understands that its job depends upon truth and facts about this process and you are reliant totally on city staff to advise you about these things. You have made that point time and again for years now. And we have been telling you from Community Vision and elsewhere for years that the city manager does not wed herself to the facts. She has, in the last two weeks, told two demonstrable, obvious lies. We are asking you to take, hold her to account and fix that problem. Because if you won't, what are we going to do? Go to the courts and get a declaratory judgment? Is that where we've come? You control the city manager. You can make her tell you the truth. She's not. And if any of you are interested in this, I invite you. Call me and I'll give you as much time as you want, more than three minutes, in black and white. Please, demand truth and honesty from your city manager. Thank you.
Right. Next, we have Karen Elrich.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Elrich and my home is in Ward Five. I too come here to make sure that we do a full public review before the project goes to the planning board for a final decision. This plan has changed so dramatically since the last time that the council has publicly reviewed and voted on it in 2018. And I respectfully ask that the city, number one, create a schedule of the remaining process with calendar dates and to be as specific as they can. And number two, to make sure we hold both public city reviews and work sessions. I look, I'm glad you told us, Kate, before we did this, took away most of my speech. I look forward to reviewing the city's resolution that was made in 2018 and comparing it to the final product that NDC is hoping to have submit to the planning board. I think they're really different and I think they need to be looked at carefully. There are promises that were made in that resolution to the citizens of Tacoma Park and I want to make sure that we revisit them and make sure that the plan looks at that. The lay-by is unsafe. Montgomery County Department of Transportation said it's unsafe. And without that lay-by, the plan has to be made smaller. And the plan that's going to be going there from NDC is too large for that little piece of land and they will not be able to make deliveries and they will not be able to pull their garbage out if the lay-by is not there and the lay-by is not safe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Sally Kerns.
Hi, my name is Sally Kern, singular, Ward Two.
Sorry, Sally.
That's okay. I too am going to talk about the NDC project. Park and Planning's January 25 letter about NDC's final site plan reads, "We do not support the location of truck-loading lay-by area, but defer to the Maryland State Highway and City of Tacoma Park for the final decision." I believe the site plan proposes too much in a tightly orchestrated nexus of underground parking garage egress, bus stop, master-planned bike lanes, a too-short lay-by for semi-delivery trucks and garbage trucks, and a safe route-to-school crosswalk used by over 200 neighborhood children on their way to school. My concerns led me to Montgomery County's Vision Zero website to learn more about Vision Zero, which reads, "Vision Zero infrastructure and policy changes don't just happen in a vacuum. It all starts with internal commitment, leadership, and clear accountability to prioritize safety." Vision Zero principles read, "Transportation-related deaths and severe injuries are preventable and unacceptable. Human life takes priority over mobility and other objectives of the road system. Human error is inevitable. The transportation system should be designed to anticipate error so the consequences are not severe injury or death." Another principle is, "Integrate human failing in approach." Policies at all levels of government need to align, making safety the highest priority for roadways." End of the priorities. Clearly, the final site plan of NDC fails to align with the Vision Zero principles. Isn't Vision Zero becoming a priority for county and state? Shouldn't Vision Zero also be a priority for the city? If it is, the current site plan should be a fail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I lost my list. We have Susan Schreiber. Susan, you're still on mute.
Yes.
Now you go.
Okay. Coming towards the end, one can cut down the verbiage a little bit. Citizens, as several people have referred to, citizens have put together a careful and detailed visual analysis of NDC's plan, looking at the height and scale of the building at the back, as well as the front, space for public use, the viability of the lay-by, which the county transportation department does not support, traffic and safety issues, and the handling of stormwater. Their analysis, all based on NDC's plans and documents, includes, for example, projected rental costs for the retail spaces, which NDC has estimated at $45 a square foot, certainly beyond the ability of most local and maybe non-chain businesses to afford. Several of you have already had a chance to review this analysis. Obviously, the staff has been doing their own review, but I must say, I'm not quite confident about that because the city manager herself is such a strong advocate for the NDC plan that I'm not comfortable that the staff, who may or may not have input from the public, are able to really look at it objectively in the context of public perspectives. I would like the council to agree to have that presentation at a council meeting and certainly to show it to staff. It's not enough to say the staff are doing their own review. Just as important as reviewing the specifics of the plan, it's important that the council take a serious look at the whole project in relation to racial equity, a core value that the council has embraced for our community. It's not enough to say that the income to the city from the development in the somewhat distant future will generate funding for affordable housing, et cetera, for example. The question is, will this upscale project in any way contribute to the goal of racial equity or simply accelerate the process of gentrification and racial and economic divisions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think our last commenter for the night is Rick Leonard.
Can you hear me? Rick Leonard, my wife and I have built our house on Manor Circle 35 years ago and I've owned the commercial building at 7334 Carroll Avenue in Tacoma Junction for 22 years, from which I operate two businesses. As a longtime resident and a business owner in the Junction, I'm very concerned about the traffic and parking problems, which I believe would be worsened by the proposed development. I'm commenting specifically on the Tacoma Junction justification statement by NDC, amended January 15, 2021. In it, NDC states on page 11 that the overflow parking in nearby neighborhoods will not be an issue. I strongly disagree with that statement. It has been an issue for years. South Manor Circle frequently has no spaces available from Carroll to the circle due to the lack of available parking near the businesses. At the south end of the Junction, there's currently a bakery, a takeout restaurant, a dry cleaner, a business center, and soon to be a butcher shop that all have short-term parking needs and share very few spaces. On page four, NDC states that they are working with the city to relocate the existing bike-share station on the property to Morrison Park. In emails between the city and Montgomery County DOT, there was discussion about possibly taking space for the bike-share station from the four-space parking lot at Morrison Park or the three spaces on Grant Avenue by Spring Mill. The businesses do not have adequate parking now and any spaces removed will push more vehicles onto adjacent streets. I would like to request that the city not make any changes for the developer that will be detrimental to the existing businesses and homeowners in the Junction. I would also like to request that the businesses be notified of proposals that will affect our parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comments for this evening. We will now move on to council comments. Do I see anyone for council comments? Councilman DiBala first.
Thank you. Inexplicably, my raised hand isn't working again. So anyway, thank you all for coming out to comment on this issue and I look forward to the schedule of events and discussions that we're going to be having. I intend to have a couple of Ward Two meetings, and I guess you already know that, to discuss the issues associated with the Junction. But what I wanted to say tonight was a couple of things on a different topic. So first, a bittersweet news. We remember that just about a year ago, we lost Beatrice Cordero Saya over on New Hampshire Avenue to COVID, a childcare provider and a community leader in our town. The State House, the Women's Caucus of State Delegates and Senators had an all-day childcare provider meeting today to talk about childcare and COVID. And they closed with a tribute to the four childcare providers in Maryland we have lost since COVID. And Ms. Cordero Saya was one of them. She was the first one they honored. It was very moving and I just wanted to let everyone know that she's been honored at that level. That was pretty powerful. In a different vein, there's been a couple of COG meetings this past week, one for the Chesapeake Bay Committee, at which the important thing for the council to hear is that the Tree Canopy Group of COG is on from their conservation cookbook, which features local ordinances, to developing region-wide tree canopy goals. So this is an exciting and challenging project and you'll be hearing more about it, I'm sure. The Energy and Climate Group met this morning and started off with a piece of news that the Global Covenant of Mayors has, for the first time, recognized, this is an international group of mayors that has recognized the first U.S. region for their climate planning and it would be our region and specifically because the regional plan that we talked about a little while ago covers not just climate mitigation, but also climate resilience. So I thought you all would want to know that. And let's see. That would be it for me. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
I would like to thank Councilmember Siemens for taking care of the deliveries in Ward Five this past Tuesday. I really appreciate it. Residents do appreciate getting veggie boxes from Adventist Community Services. So I just want to make sure that I highlighted the work that you and the volunteers that you rounded out that helped Ward Five residents. This past Sunday, I had the opportunity to go to a special presentation led by Delegate Lurg Charcutian. She presented Ms. Jackie Fraser with a citation signed by all of the members of our delegation, D20. Ms. Fraser, as many of you know, does yeoman work in not just Ward Five, but the entire city. Ms. Fraser is a very special person and I thank Delegate Charcutian for taking the time and making the effort to give that presentation. And there were about seven, eight residents in Essex House that came out to see the presentation for all the hard work, especially during the pandemic that, you know, Ms. Fraser has given to the residents time and time again. So that was really great. The comments that residents came out and gave regarding the Junction, I would ask that staff follow up on these and get us some answers. I would highlight what Ms. Jessica Landman said and Andrew Strongen. I hope that we can get more information and chase down, you know, what happened in this situation regarding the lay-by. And then finally, I ask City TV to take the presentation given by the planning department on the mini-master plan and edit it into a self-contained video so that it can be shared with residents, especially in Ward Five. Thank you.
Great. Next, we have Councilwoman Sirci.
Great. Thank you so much. So just want to, one, remind everyone to please complete your REC Center survey. How many folks have done it? You can do it online. You should have written it in your newsletter. You can go on the website. It's right there. Definitely want to encourage people. It takes just a few minutes to please complete the REC Center survey. So just want to put in that shameless reminder for folks. Also, Public Safety Task Force met last night. And again, I cannot stress how appreciative I am for our task force members. Last night, they had an opportunity to get presentations from city staff on various issues. including policing, but also rec services, housing, economic development. And they're already asking some really pertinent questions. So again, I want to thank our Public Safety Task Force, as well as city staff, for all of your presentations last night. Tomorrow night will be a meeting for the residents on the eight thousand block of Wildwood Drive. It'll be tomorrow at seven-thirty. Special thanks to our Director of Public Works, who will be joining us as we talk about traffic calming on that block. And I think that is all I have. So thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate thank you to the residents who came out tonight to speak and appreciate the, the concerns that were shared about ensuring we have a thorough city review process of the junction project. That's obviously very important to me, and I look forward to the next steps on that as we figure out our schedule for, for how that will look. But it certainly needs to involve thorough review and public engagement. Just two quick things. Had a great meeting last night with Estraitas Montessori School and Central Evangelistico, which are the property owner and the school that are going into the property at one-seventeen Elm Avenue. It was a great opportunity to learn a little more about what the school is planning. And there were some parents who were interested in enrolling their, their children at the school. It was a great opportunity, and I have some notes from that that I'll be circulating. I think kind of the key bit that came out was that they're really going to be emphasizing being a part of the community and wanting to be a real neighborhood school and work with residents. So I think that's a really exciting opportunity. And then the other thing is that I am going to be on Talk of Tacoma Radio this Sunday, so tune in to listen there. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kovar.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. A couple of announcements. First, I have circulated this information, but tomorrow, March twenty-fifth, at seven-thirty, we're having a Ward One community discussion. I circulated the Zoom credentials for those who may wish to participate in, in the weekly blog that I sent out a couple of days ago. And I'll send a reminder out, I suppose, tomorrow. And encourage anybody to, who's interested in Ward One to participate in that, it's at seven-thirty. Any topic is welcome. And then secondly, one other thing in the way of an announcement. On Tuesday of next week at seven P.M., there's a community discussion on the Maple Avenue Complete Street redesign. I mentioned that briefly in the discussion earlier this evening about the minor master plan. But just by way of a brief background, the city received a grant from COG, the Council of Governments, to look into redesigning Maple Avenue with the idea to make it more friendly, if you will, toward pedestrians and transit users and cyclists and so on. And it may include much of Maple Avenue, or may just include what's been called Lower Avenue, Lower Maple Avenue, which is the park from Philadelphia over to Sligo. But in any case, I also announced that that meeting was coming up in my weekly blog. I don't believe I included at that time the Zoom credentials, but I'll circulate that as well. Encourage people to join in on that, to learn what it's about. That's Tuesday of next week at seven P.M. And then the last thing, as several of my colleagues mentioned already, I also appreciate that a number of residents participated in the public comment period tonight to talk about Tacoma Junction. I think it is important that we have a thorough and, and public review of the project before it goes to the planning board. I'm committed to doing that. I'm pleased that the mayor indicated that that's, it sounds like the approach that, that will be taken. It will be getting more details on that soon. So looking forward to that and to being part of that analysis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A couple of updates. It was, it was a busy night last night between the public safety meeting. I was glad to be able to join that for a bit and then hear about the new Montessori school at the former location of J&amp;A. And I just wish they had been here twenty years earlier. It sounds like a wonderful school in our neighborhood and looking, really looking forward to them being there. I was also able to join Councilmember Smith and Delegate Charcutian and the residents of Essex House in celebrating and thanking Jackie Fraser. It was a, a very nice event on Sunday afternoon. I want to let folks know that we, it is soon to be our budget season, and the county's budget season has started. We put up a blog last week on tax duplication based on the resolution that we passed in early March. I'm, I'm going to testify on behalf of the city on April, the evening of April sixth, before the county council regarding the bud, their budget. Tomorrow night, the Maryland Municipal League, the Montgomery Chapter, Montgomery County Chapter is considering adoption of a resolution that is very similar to the one that we adopted here in the city on tax duplication. So I want to encourage residents to take a look at that. And please contact the county council regarding tax duplication. Couple of other things. I was informed by Grace Wiggins this afternoon that we have our seventh home stretch down payment assistance recipient who just closed on a condo in Ward Four. So Councilmember Siemens has a new constituent coming soon. So we're very excited about that. In addition, the Habitat for Humanity Project on Garland Avenue, the applications close soon. So if you know folks who may still be thinking about it, please encourage them to do that. So far, they have fifty-five applications that they've received, and the large majority of them are Tacoma Park or Silver Spring residents. So please continue, continue to encourage people to do that, but it just shows what great need. And, and hopefully through Grace's great work and other city staff will have more projects like that. The other thing I wanted to update people on is that Tacoma Park continues to be a site for vaccine distribution. And there is a new initiative between Adventist Healthcare Casa and the Latino Health Initiative Partners in Montgomery and Prince George's County. I was able to be on a call on Friday with the county executive and with the county's representative working on this. We're going to have six hundred vaccines provided to the Latinx community and at our site here at the, at the campus here in Tacoma Park by Adventist Healthcare. They'll be, Casa is going to help sign up three hundred community members from Prince George's County. And in Montgomery County, folks will be signed up through the Our Health and Wellness Initiative. If people need more information or have residents who this would help, be helpful to send out the information, let me know. I've connected Donna Wright, our communications specialist, with the folks who are running this. So hopefully soon, that information will also be up on our website. But this should be an ongoing partnership, and I think the city of Tacoma Park is a great location for this partnership with Prince George's County and Montgomery County to bring needed vaccines to the Latinx community.
Mayor, will the materials be available in Spanish at some point?
I think there's a, actually, there's a great website that I will send around. Our Well, Our Health and Wellness run through Montgomery County has been up for, I can't, I can't forget how long, but it has videos, outreach, information, and other things. So I'll make sure to circulate that. Apologies, I forgot to do it on Friday. Great. All right. Let's get rocking and rolling on our vote sessions, only almost ten o'clock. The first item we have is our second reading ordinance amending the stormwater management code. I know we have our city attorney is with us. And I believe, yes, there she is, our head of public works is here as well. We updated last week, while we were going through it, there were a couple of changes that we did make during first reading. The updated ordinance is on the city website. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilman DiBala, move. Do I have a second? Councilman Kostic, second. Do I have any questions? Comments? Councilman DiBala.
Thank you. I was, I, I was in exchange with the city attorney about a few, and the public works manager about a couple of points that we're still trying to, that, that I'm still trying to get straight in my head. And so before I go to those two specific points in the ordinance, I would just appreciate it if we could, one more time with feeling, go over the schedule of how you think this will play out because it affects one of the, one or more of the spots in the ordinance. And I do appreciate the efforts over this past week to, to get the dates and the timing straight in the ordinance. I just want to make sure we got it right. So I appreciate that first. So, or maybe I should be trying to repeat back to you. So
Who, I'm sorry, who are you speaking, who's the question directed towards?
Well, it was directed toward the Public Works Director, but she, I, I didn't hear anything. Is she on mute?
No, no, I'm, I'm not on mute. I, we're still working out the details of the schedule. I, I know the phases that will need to take place. First will be a notification to all the property owners about the, the change in fee and the amount of the fee and the impervious area calculation.
And do you know when that notification might be? Because that's one of the two areas that is on my list of, of, of points. It says July first at this point.
I would assume that the notification will come out in late April, optimistically, early May, less optimistically. I think based on the information we had from the finance director, the city needs to provide information on the billing to the county in May. So that's a kind of a hard point that we'll need to reach. Part of that notification will include information about the appeals process. So then we can anticipate as soon as people receive that notification, we'll have questions and requests for information. And then we'll gear up to provide that information in as quick a timeframe as we can. The billing itself, done by the county through the property tax bills, will take place in September and December, as it always does. And we're anticipating that over the summer and fall and into, and the winter, we will develop the credit program that will then provide information about. And people will be informed how that can apply for credits that would be applicable to the next billing cycle.
Thanks. So my, my two questions, and we don't have to beat the words to death, but can we just say, can we ask that, that staff? Get this, get the right dates in there. So in one hundred A, I think that's the section, July referring to the initial notice? And or is that referring to the periodic notices after that?
Can you tell me the section again?
That's the periodic notices, I think. What section are you in?
I think I'm in one hundred A. I, I apologize for not having it up in front of me this very second. I'm working on that while we're talking.
Is it beginning on July first? Twenty, and every five years thereafter?
Right.
I thought we had inserted a date.
Uh, yeah, that's why I'm bringing this up.
Thank you.
Yes, Skip may want to speak to that because I believe he made a recommendation on a date. The idea was the assessment notice, and that the assumption was it would be five years after this year. That's the first date, so July first, twenty-twenty-six.
Right. I know the city attorney and I and the, the head of public works did have an exchange on this. I'm just trying to find.
I, I believe that the date that was recommended was twenty-twenty-six. And I, I think what happened was that that exchange may have taken place after this got posted.
Got it. Okay, it should be twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah, maybe that's the fix.
Yeah.
The other place where there's, for me, from some date confusion, is oh-seven-oh-D-four-G talks about six months for, for responding to a request for a credit the first time around. And I, I was just counting on my, on my, on my fingers the months between when the regulations come out and what, some time for, for people to actually apply and, and when you have to be done with all of that to get the information to the county. And I think six months is a little bit generous as a result. So I was wondering if we could, if I understand the provision correctly, what it's referring to, can we make that four months? This is oh-seven-oh-D-four-G.
Sorry, say that again, it's what number?
I'd like to suggest four months instead of six because, as I understand it, the provision applies to the amount of time that the city.
Here, let me just, let me share my screen so everyone can see this.
Thank you.
I think the intention here is that, that, that we're saying basically people have, the city has thirty days to respond after receiving a completed application in regard to credit, except for the first year where we're saying we are giving a period of six months. And I would assume that would be from approval of this ordinance that we'd have a, you know, establish our credit program application and the details of the credit program.
Yes, and, and when I asked the city attorney about it, he, I think he said it was six months from when someone applies with a credit, and that's what I'd like to get straight. Because I agree, it's going to take six months to get the program up and running. It might not take six months, particularly knowing there's a date firm that it has to be done to go to the county next year. There might, it might not be six months to respond to an individual, individual application.
So Councilwoman Kostic, I'm trying to find where you are in the ordinance.
Page seven, line twenty-eight there.
Thank you. Got it. There we are.
So again, do we, do we need to make a small tweak here to get every, I think everybody agrees on the, on the timeline? Does this say what we wanted to say? I'm proposing four months, assuming it applies to how long it takes to review an individual application.
Is that an amendment? Are you proposing an amendment?
I'm, I'm waiting for an answer from staff and the attorney as to whether I've got the reading correct.
Okay.
So I'm not sure that I understand what the issue is from a legal perspective. If the concern is whether there is, the time period is too long or too short, I can't really speak to that in terms of the practical application of it. My understanding was from last week that the concern was, in the first year, there could be a number of these types of application. And so the time period wanted to be extended, the council wanted the time period extended longer than the thirty days. So I recall that the proposal was six months, that's what's in there. If it needs to be something else, I have no issues with that, but I can't speak to what, what may be more beneficial for or six.
So if this applies to a completed application review, and it's thirty days normally, but we have a big bulk of applications for credit at once, I would propose four months, not six. And yes, that is an amendment.
Does someone want to second the amendment? Councilman, Councilmember Kovar seconds it. Ms. Braithwaite, can you speak to whether the difference between four and six months here and if there's?
Yeah, I, I don't, on, on surface have a, have a concern. You know, we basically will establish the process and figure out the timeframe so that we have plenty of time before when we need to submit the second year's billing to the county. So we'll just work backward from that and make sure that we've provided enough time, you know, to, to be able to manage, you know, potentially a more numerous applications than we will get, you know, after that. So I, I don't have particular concerns with, with the four months.
Okay, all right, I guess, all those, well, does anyone else have any other questions regarding the four to six, Councilmember Circe?
So, one question I have is about, what is the consequence if we're not able to meet the letter of the code? Let's say for whatever reason, we don't have things stood up and applications viewed within the four month time period. So part of me wonders if, if six months during the first year gives us a little bit of a buffer, because this is the first time we're doing it and we don't know what may happen. And if the director of public works thinks that this can happen within four, great. But if we're, if, if for whatever reason we run into a hiccup, and this is finalized, what happens?
So again, my understanding is that the four or the six months applies to reviewing individual credit applications after we've got the regulations in place. So the hiccups, I think are going to come in the regulation process. And, and I appreciate your question totally.
So, if I'm being asked the question, basically I would say that what Councilmember DiBala said is correct, which is this, this would start once the regulations are in place, because there's no other methodology to apply until the regulations are in place. And then the time period starts to run once the application is submitted.
Right.
Okay.
And the first year, we may have a lot of applications.
Right.
Yeah, so I.
And we would have to develop the review process.
I thought that was going to be done during the development of the regulations.
Yeah, I think, I think this is just, this is the review, how long they get to review. I think that my reading in this is the review process is done, but my concern would just be how many we would get in and given this is just the first year. I don't, I would imagine the department's going to try and get them done as quickly as possible, but.
Yeah.
Okay. But if, if, if the director of public works feels that four months is fine, then that's fine.
Yeah, my crystal ball is decidedly foggy, but we will do what, what we can.
All right. All right, will the, any other questions on this? Okay, will the clerk call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll just make a note here that this gets changed to four.
And do you want to go through the, through line by line and ask for potential amendments? Or should I just, while I'm talking?
Well, I had asked, yeah. Why don't you just go through your amendments?
Well, I only have one other, which is all the way at the end, which is why I asked. And again, just making sure that I've got clarification from the city attorney, but making sure that I understand, that we all understand this is what we intended. So in 120, we had a talk about what applied to single family homeowners and what applied to all the other property owners in terms of corrections, who has to provide what and when. And we, I think we agreed that we wanted flexibility for, for single family property owners. And, and to, and so the May is great. The reference to single family versus other types of property owners is, is no longer in here. And I just wanted to make sure that that, that we all note, noticed that and agree that that reflects our intent to treat all property owners the same, including if a multifamily property owner, could we scroll down to D for a second?
To D, there is no.
There is no reference to a single family property owner be, being the only, which is what I thought we were talking about. And I'm fine that all property owners get, get, there's the discretion to waive the formal certification of the engineer and the surveyor and all of that stuff. If we want that to apply to all property owners, not just single family, that is okay with me. It just looks different from what, what I remember us talking about last week. And I just wanted to point it out and make sure everybody's okay with it.
So it is, Councilmember DiBala is correct that that is different from last week. First of all, what used to be D was combined into a, a new C, if you will. And then, and then secondly, my recollection is, is that the removal of, of single family residents, part of, from former D, excuse me, was part of the discussion with the city manager. And there were questions asked about treating them differently or the same. And, and the consensus was to remove it. And, and that was certainly in the document that the mayor did on the shared screen to remove that. So that, that is what happened. It can, whatever the, the will of the, the council is, but Councilmember DiBala is correct that that is, was removed.
And I, and I, it was getting late, I might have missed it. My bad if I did. Everybody else is okay with this than I am.
Councilwoman Circe, do you have a question on this or is it?
I do, so the May, sorry, but the May wouldn't preclude us from if a multifamily property were to come along and want to submit a request, a correction, it wouldn't preclude us from saying, hey, if you, we would, we recommend you submit. It may be an engineering report or a surveyor report. It might be an up, an additional step for staff in that if we said a must for that property owner type, then they would know that they would automatically have to do it. But the May just means that they may come to us and say, hey, we, we have a dispute. And then we would then have to tell them, well, we need this extra documentation. Am I interpreting that correctly?
I'm, I'm reading right now. Yes, you are.
Okay. So, so I'm fine keeping it as the May, as long as, you know, we understand that that means for commercial property, multifamily buildings and the like. Whereas it, before it was an automatic thing that they would have to bring that, you know, they would have to have that engineering or surveyor report if they wanted to request a correction. In this case with the May, you know, we may get more questions about what they need in order to dispute.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. I'm wondering if the change from must to may, if instead of may include, we might want to say may require a certification by a registered engineer.
I, I think that, that, I think we would want to rework this for clarity on it from a number of different perspectives, if, if that is what the desire is. But simply leaving it as may could create some problems. Although I do agree that Councilmember Circe's reading is the better interpretation. I would want to make either reinsert must or create a way for the city manager to require it by linking it to the first sentence, utilizing better language.
If I could jump in for a minute, the reason we wanted to make the change initially from must was because I think there was a feeling that for the kinds of situations that would likely be encountered in single family property, the insistence on always having the highly paid professionals being called upon would create a cost burden on single family owners in many cases, which might exceed the, the nature of whatever the, the fee was. And so therefore saying that they would have to do it in every time wouldn't make any sense. In a much larger industrial institutional commercial multifamily property, the fees could be much larger and so it may not be as burdensome to have them need to do that. And it could be a business expense as well. But I think it's appropriate to say that it could be discretionary for them as well. So that if it's a minor kind of point concerning stormwater, it still may not be necessary to, for one of those larger entities to have to pay a costly professional to do the work. Where there could be a very small apartment building or a small business that really isn't one of these large ones that we might be thinking of. And so to me, having, having it may for all is fair and equitable. I do agree though, saying it may require, meaning that it's up to the, the staff to say, hey, in this case, you need to do this, is better than may, just saying may include, because that makes it sound like it's just kind of up to the applicant to do it. So I, I think saying may require and not differentiate in between single family and any of the others makes the most sense. And is the most equitable and captures, I think, what we were trying to do.
Okay, so that is an amendment?
Yeah.
Would someone like to second that amendment?
It, it, okay.
Is that, oh, sorry, I thought that's what you were suggesting Skip before, just changing that to require.
No, I, 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 I just want to point out that, that we, we have to remember that this is the property owner submitting a request. So if we, the request for correction that the property owner is submitting, if, if we say may require, that, that does not necessarily make sense. It, it, what we're trying to do, as I understand the conversation right now, is make it so that the city may require. And, and, and that doesn't fit with how this entire paragraph is structured.
What if we just said the, the property owner may be required to submit?
May be required by the city man, by the city manager.
That would work.
So may be required by the city manager to include a certificate, a certification?
Well, I, I think it would have to go, it would be then the.
The city manager may require a certification, et cetera.
So, I would suggest that it would be then, when you go, yeah, then the property owner may be required. And.
By the city manager, do we have to say that?
I think it's probably, it's probably better.
So then just may be required to include?
Yes. And I, I would, I, I think it would probably make public works life a lot easier if we just said, we, okay, then the property may be required. I would put by the city manager after required.
Okay. Okay, I moved that, all right, do you have a second?
I'm, I'm sorry, I hate to add a.
No, that's all right.
But in the original language, it was about the property owner submitting a request for correction. And that request for correction would include. So are we saying in this case, if the property owner alleges an error in the square footage of the increase, then the property owner may be required by the city manager to include? Or is it a request, so, or should it be then the property owner, when submitting a request for correction, the property owner may be required by the city manager to include certification? Does that make sense? Because the original language is about the request for correction? And what needs to be submitted at that time? Or what may be required to be submitted at that time?
So, so you could insert, reinsert after where you have to include with the request for correction, a certification by the registered engineer?
Right.
Let me think it out here. That work? Okay, Councilwoman DiBala moved it, do I have a second? Councilmember Kovar, any other questions or thoughts on this? All right, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote on this amendment?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember DiBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman DiBala, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it for me, thank you.
Well, Councilwoman Circe, did you have, is it an old hand or a new hand?
Sorry.
It's okay, Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate the discussion on that. And I just have a handful of questions for clarification or possible changes that I'd also like to put forward. In general, I want to say that I had some mixed feelings about the, the changes, but I think with all of the credit and appeal work that we've done, I feel a lot better about this than I did before, as I do in addition with the previous passage of the resolution calling for us to try to address some of the bigger climate change related aspects of stormwater in our budget. So I appreciate this, the process by which, in my opinion, made the ordinance quite a bit better. And so what I'd like to look at first is on page seven of this document, lines 29 to 32. And that's also small h, we can get to that. Yeah, right there, so 29 to 32. So there was an exchange about this offline earlier. And so my question is about measures, and I think it says here, in the event a fee credit application is rejected, then the city has to notify the applicant writing of any additional measures necessary for approval of the credit. So I think this was derived from the tree ordinance, and the idea was measures that could be taken to ensure that the tree protection plan would be approved. And in that case, measures would be actual physical steps you could take, putting up a sign and so on. I think in this case, if I'm getting it correctly, what we're talking about is not that the person has to, you know, install additional stormwater measures on site, but that there's additional information that they could submit that could potentially lead to a different result. And if that's, if I'm right about that's what we're trying to say here, then I would have a small amendment to clarify that. But maybe I'm missing something and maybe measures is. and maybe measures is, is what we do want. So if staff or the city attorney might want to just say something about that.
I think that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna, I think that was Ms. Braithwaite. But I was gonna say that, you know, from my perspective, I see the potential for just documentary information being submitted and potentially other related actions on the ground that could potentially be taken with some of the things that I heard discussed about the credit concept. So in my view, measures is broad enough to cover both. And I tend to see that there could have been, in the tree context, which is where this information came from, both actions and information. But I will certainly defer to Ms. Braithwaite on that, because that, you know, could decide the issue.
Yeah. And I was just gonna say, I think that, I mean, I think it's likely that we wouldn't tell people, in order to get a credit, you need to do X, Y, Z. We would just say, you applied for a credit for a rain garden or a dry well, but you didn't document construction methods or this or that. So where we're, my, my assumption is that we'll have specific items to give credits on. And, and our rejection of an application will be based on lack of information verifying that they've met the requirements.
Right. Because I don't see someone, when they're turned down, saying, okay, I'm gonna spend another $3,000 to
Right.
install some other, you know, measure at that point. So if that's the case, then I, it feels as if where measures appears twice, we're really talking about information. And I would also say it shouldn't be information necessary for approval of the credit, because implication is if that measure, if that information is provided, it will be approved. What we want them to say is information.
It's kind of a documentation question. My, my guess of where our rejection will be is they didn't document that they met our criteria. So it would basically be additional documentation or information to enable approval of the credit, you know?
Right. So I would propose that we make that change where measures appears twice.
Can you just, can you, so I can type it in, read exactly what you want?
Well, I think when Ms. Braithwaite said documentation or information, I don't know that it's right. And I, and maybe the city attorney could say this, could comment on this. I don't think we want to necessarily say necessary for approval, because implication is that if that information provided, they would get it. Aren't we really saying additional documentation, information for reconsideration of the?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a necessary change, because it clearly says at the end that you may, you have to submit a revised application. But if that, if that makes it more clear for, for the group, then, then I'm not sure that it matters. It's just redundant at that point.
Did I get?
But I think the second time measures appears, it's the same thing again, mayor. In the next line, I think we want to say such documentation and information again, right? Yeah. And then that would be fine.
Does someone want to second the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or thoughts? Not seeing one. Clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Circe?
No.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
And then I just had a couple of other questions. If I could ask either Public Works Director or the, or the city attorney to, to comment, that would be great. So the next one is on page, at the top of page nine, line, section 16.08, 110, right. So here in A, lines five through seven, it says the fee must be paid within 30 days. And then D, it says unless the county declines an enforced collection of the fee, the provision of this section do not apply to fees collected pursuant to real property tax bill. So the complication and the part that I'm not entirely clear on still is that because our fees are sent to people through the property tax and paid in that way, it's just not entirely clear to me what, what we're saying here.
So the issue that arose was, do we need this collection mechanism in light of the fact that a significant portion of these fees are collected pursuant to the real property tax bill? Not all of them, however, are collected pursuant to a real property tax bill. So the city still needed the, and, and the city manager pointed out to me that there are at times amounts on the real property tax bill, which the county just does not collect for whatever reason. So the city still needs a mechanism to collect these fees if they are not done pursuant to the county's collection process. And that is what this is designed to do.
So those would be fees for multifamily and commercial buildings or some other category?
I would have to defer, I, I don't know what, what the breakdown is.
Yeah, I'm not clear either. I was just assuming that the fees, you know, the amounts would be so small that the county would not pursue it. But I don't know if that was the intention.
So this is just giving us two different ways to have it addressed. Is that the idea?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. That's fine. And then the one last question I had is just in lines 23, 22. I'm sorry, no. Lines 23, 22, right. So
The same page?
Same page, right. So that says, within 30 days after the assessment notice that the bill is mailed or issued, that the property owner may request a correction. And then we've all talked about how this year, that letter will be going out, property owners will receive it, they'll have time to prepare an appeal. But then the assessment notice is only going to be going out every five years. The next one will be in 2026. And so I suppose we can assume that if the person received it once, then they'll know about it. And they'll know that if they make some changes to their property, they'll have the ability to apply for credit in a future year. But I don't think this is just a a strange rare alternative. What would happen if a new homeowner came in during the five years, has no idea about this, sees the fee on their real estate bill, they probably, they don't pay it, it's paid through escrow, so they don't think about it too much. Then they do install something on their property in the next three, four years before the next assessment comes around. They might be entitled to a credit. They have no idea that the credit even exists. And so what are they, so what's really supposed to happen in that case? They're not going to submit the appeal. Now, maybe this is
We'd have all the information available on the website and on our frequently asked questions. And, you know, they would be getting the bill from the county annually. So it would be, you know, it'd be incumbent on the property owner to inquire about what that bill was for. And then we would have to have information easily available that they could identify what the fee was for.
But that's not something that we would, is there a way to have that be something that we would share with new homeowners? Is there a way to routinely do that?
We have this, what we provide new homeowners relative to the tree ordinance, so something similar could be created.
I mean, does that have to be done as part of the ordinance? Or can we just do that?
I would think that it would. It was previously included in the tree ordinance. I would assume that it was a
Well,
I just, I'm getting nervous. This is a second reading ordinance. And it's 10:30 at night. Like, I'm just,
I'm just gonna say
If you want to table this until after
No, no.
for the time. But I'm just, I think we're all tired. And I'm trying to understand the changes that are now coming up.
What I, what I, what I'm just about, what I was just about to say is that I don't think we should stop this as a result of this. But I think we should see that it's something that ought to be addressed at some point. Now we decided that the assessments won't go out every five years.
Okay.
And maybe the Public Works Director could give some consideration to it and circle back with us later. But that was the last thing I wanted to ask about.
Okay. Thank you. Is I okay with you, Ms. Braithwaite? Cool. Anyone else have any other changes, questions? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote with, on the ordinance as amended?
Mayor, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have a minute, mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. No, there was, there was one issue that came up based on a question that a council member asked. And if, if I could, I would like you to refer to, to get to the right spot. Page eight, line 24.
Okay.
I think just to ensure that there's no confusion about the ability to send, to bill for the fee, I think the following lang, it may be advisable to add the following language. And I'll just read it. And then I can read it more slowly if you want. But nothing herein shall be construed as barring the city from billing property owners for the fee based on existing information in the city's possession until the new assessment and notice cycle is implemented on July 1. And I think we decided the date was 2026. So the goal of that would be to allow the city to keep utilizing the process that it has. And it, and it can't, it doesn't allow this, this provision to be interpreted as you can't bill until July 1, 2026, because no assessment notices has gone out.
Okay. You want to read that more slowly and I'll type it in?
Yes. Nothing herein shall be construed.
That's not slow.
Do you want me to?
Nothing herein can be construed, shall be, shall be.
Shall be construed as barring the city from billing property owners for the fee based on existing information in the city's possession until the new assessment.
All right, wait, instance's possession?
Until the new assessment and notice cycle is implemented on July 1, 2026. Right. I think that's what we said. And, and I would just move that, mayor, once you've got it the way you want it. Okay.
Good.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay. All right, based on the
You have an extra in there before implement.
Oh, thanks. And implement. Thank you. All right, is?
Yeah, mayor, I, I think honestly, it reads better if you, if you take that entire provision and put it at the end of the paragraph where, right after fee. Right, exactly, right there. And then we'll have to put another word in at the beginning, but that's okay. So just right.
Should I just put beginning back in?
Yes, or yes. And then, and then at the end of this, the new sentence, just add on July 1, 2026. Then I apologize for injecting that.
It's okay.
Can you, can you explain what that means?
Well, yes. So we're essentially creating a new five-year assessment cycle by the language changes that were made last week. And the way the provision was edited last week, not the best reading, but one reading of it could be that the city would not be permitted to bill until it sent the assessment notices on July 1, 2026. And obviously, that's not the intention of what you're trying to do. But given the significance of that, my advice is that you want to include this language so that you may continue to bill as you have been doing. Because the, the previous language made it discretionary to send out a notice. Now you're making it mandatory every five years starting in 2026.
Okay. So if that's, so I'd ask, are the city clerk or the city attorney, if there's a change offered by the city attorney, does someone have to move it as an amendment? Or can we just, if it's okay with us, can we just accept it? I don't think we've ever had.
Yeah, I think you should move it as an amendment. You should
I agree.
All right. Does someone want to move this as an amendment?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Councilman Kostik, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Circe, any questions or thoughts on this? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right. Will the clerk please call the vote on the ordinance as amended?
All right, Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Kovar is a yes, I see. Yeah. Councilmember, Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Thank you. All right. That takes care of the stormwater ordinance. The next we have is a first reading ordinance approving the FY 21 budget amendment number five. This is just simply regarding the decision we made last week to use money out of the housing reserve fund regarding the going into partnership with HIP and the purchase and the rehabilitation of the home on Lincoln Avenue. Would someone like to move this first reading ordinance approving the FY 21 budget amendment number five? Councilman Kostik, do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, any questions? Thoughts on this? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to our work session. We have three tonight. The first is our code enforcement update and
So, Madam Mayor, we have our direct
So, Madam Mayor, we have our Director of Neighborhood Services with us this evening, as well as Chief Dival. We know that the city council's been getting a lot of questions from residents on our code enforcement process, and it's been a while since Rick has been before you. So we thought it'd be good to give a refresher on the process and just a general update from our Neighborhood Services Division. So, welcome, Rick, thanks for being with us this evening, and I am going to share my screen for your PowerPoint, and then we can have a group discussion.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Everybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, well, as you all know, the, you know about the Neighborhood Services Team, its existence, and I'm the N S T manager. The, the concept for the Neighborhood Services Team started when code enforcement was moved from the Housing Community Development Department to the Police Department. This occurred in August twenty sixteen. The Neighborhood Services Team was formally created when our manager, me, was assigned to the division. And code enforcement was combined with parking enforcement. This occurred in March twenty seventeen. Next slide, please. The, the purpose of the division, provide for the inspection of residential, commercial, and institutional properties. And vacant parcels, provide technical inspection services required for various home repair and anti-littering initiatives. Provide education on and enforcement of the city code, including parking and environmental laws. This division combines work that until about two years ago fell under the purview of various city departments. Management objectives, provide effective, timely, and proactive education and enforcement of the property maintenance code. And abatement of identified code violations. Provide effective enforcement and management of city parking resources. And provide education outreach for city environmental laws, including safe grow and the polystyrene plastic bag and plastic straw bands. Next, please. And there's pictures of the team. Everybody looking good except me. Patricia Johnson, Roberto Rojas, Tim Grattan, and Daniel Bushman. Rojas and Bushman are the park enforcement officers. Patricia Johnson and Tim Grattan are the code enforcement officers.
Next slide. Civilian of the year award there, so kudos to Daniel.
Twenty twenty six statistics, excuse me, we issued two hundred and forty-five courtesy notices. Out of the two hundred and forty-five courtesy, courtesy notices, only seventy-four of those cases involved ended up being notices of violation. Which of course is the next step. And out of those notices of violation, twenty-seven citation cases arose. And out of the twenty-seven citation cases, we had four cases that went to trial. We had twelve environmental cases, they were involving cases either plastic bag ban, polystyrene ban violations. Or safe pro violations. We removed ten thou, I mean, one thousand thirteen signs and flyers from telephone poles. We did sixty-one monthly litter inspections, nineteen monthly vacant house inspections. And for twenty twenty-one, we currently have sixty open cases, and we have eight trial cases pending. Although I think one of the cases is gonna get postponed, and I think two of them are gonna get abated before we go to court, in which case they'll be dismissed. So we're probably only looking really at about five or six cases. The courtesy notices, this is the code enforcement process. The first thing somebody is gonna get is the courtesy notice, and that's, you all have probably seen it. Looks like this. You can see it. I also have a copy of it later on in the presentation, but this would be hanging on your doorknob. Here's one that's been filled out. You know, it, it would have, you know, whatever the, the property maintenance code violation is. On this one, I've filled it out, it's rubbish and bulk items on the premises, and there's a vehicle parked on green space. The due date of issue is one twenty-six twenty-one, and to avoid a notice of violation, please, please address the issue written above. By two four twenty-one, so February the fourth twenty-one. And there's a contact phone number in there, my contact information. There's also directions as to how to look up the code on the internet if they wanna do that. The next thing somebody's gonna get, if they don't respond to the courtesy notice, and we give them five to ten days to respond. Based upon the, the case, the officer, the code enforcement officer has discretion that they use in regards to the timeframe. Let's say ten ga, days go by, the, the, the house is re-inspected, the code inspector sees no change and, and no progress. The violations are still there, then notice of violation would be issued. This is a document that looks like this. This would have it, it's more formal. Yeah, but once again, it's another warning, it spells out exactly where in the code you're, you can find the violation. It spells out the violation, and it gives required actions. And for this case, it's, the required actions are remove accumulation of rubbish and bulk objects. Including but unlimited to yard waste, wood boards, trash, furniture, et cetera, from front of premises. And for the vehicle, it just says move any and all motor vehicles to surface parking area or remove from premises. And there's contact information for whoever issued it. And, you know, any directions they might need. It says that i, if they don't follow the directives of this notice of violation, they may end up with a uniform civil citation. So we're letting them know what might happen in the future if they choose not to comply. And we give them ten to twenty days to comply with that. Let's say the inspector comes back after ten, twenty days, and that violations are still there, then the next thing they would receive is a failure to abate letter. That looks something like this. You know, once again, it's another warning, it's letting the person know that, you know, an inspection has occurred. You're still in violation, and we give another ten to twenty days for them to comply. Once again, the contact information is, is on there if they wanna call the inspector with any questions or comments. And then after that, if the inspector comes back after twenty days, the, the violations are still there. Then they, they can end up getting a citation, and the citation looks like a, a ticket, you know, like you might get for a parking ticket from a police officer. Or any other civil citation that you might get. We have to give a ticket for each violation. So for this case, we, we could only put the, the vehicle violation on one ticket. And the accumulation of bulk items and rubbish on another ticket. So this case, in particular, we would have to send two tickets, two citations, to the homeowner. If there's more than one person on the deed to the house, then we do have to send two tickets to each person. So sometimes we can end up having to send four, sometimes six citations for what's really a pretty simple case, but the law requires us to do that. And violations are subject to receive an extension if the property owner or owners have demonstrated an actual effort to abate the violation. And basically, what, what's that saying is we work with people as much as we can. We know that, that life has its challenges, and sometimes they can't always get things done on a timely, in a timely manner. So we, we give them as many breaks as we can without the case stretching on too long, you know, we try not to drag the cases out for a year or anything like that. Usually, if, if we end up having to go to court, it's, it usually from the beginning of the case till we get to court, it can be four to six months. And if they happen to abate the violation before the court date, the day we go to court. Then we will ask, we'll advise attorney that the, the case has been abated, and we will not proceed with the case, we just ask the case to be dropped. So, you know, fortunately, most cases, as you can see by the, the numbers I gave you before, most cases don't go to court. Most cases don't even end up with a notice of violation, the courtesy notice seems to work for, you know, more than half the cases. And that, and that's, that's something that I'm really grateful for. When I, when I first, when, when we first set up Neighborhood Services. Code enforcement had discontinued the use of courtesy notices. They were just sending notices of violation for every case. And I didn't, I didn't like that. So I, I, and I asked him, why, why did you stop sending the courtesy notices? And the response was, well, nobody's responding to them. So I, I got together with one of our residents who has a background in advertising, and I spoke to him, we discussed it. And he said, well, you know, the current, the current courtesy notice that you have, if I got it, I'd just throw it in the trash. And one of the things that he mentioned about it was, it doesn't tell people what's going to happen next, you know? What's gonna happen if I don't do something? He felt that that was important information. That's how we came up with the avoid a violation on, on the courtesy notice. There's their courtesy notice right there, you know, we would like to help you. It used to say, we used to have it in bold, avoid a violation. But then the mayor felt like we should switch that bolding to, we would like to help you. I guess some people felt threatened by avoid a violation. But the whole idea behind the courtesy notices is. Is that we wanna alert you to a problem, and we really don't wanna send you a notice of violation. That's what we're trying to avoid. And we do that, not only because we would like to get the, the case handled quickly, but also there's, there's cost involved in, in mailing. You know, if I send a courtesy notice, I'm sorry, if I send a, a notice of violation. It, it costs me six dollars and ninety-six cents, so I have to send it certified, and I have to send. I have to send one copy of the, the, the notice, notice of violation certified mail, and I have to send you another copy, regular mail. The law requires that. For certified letter nowadays, it costs six dollars and ninety-six cents. So if you start sending out a bunch of notices of violation, it gets expensive really fast. And if I have to send you a, a citation. That's what they call restricted certified, and that's twelve dollars and fifty-five cents of per citation that we have to send out. Or per case, I should say, that we have to send out. And the citations, as I mentioned earlier, just like with, with the notices of violation. If there's multiple owners, then we have to send a copy of the citation to each homeowner. And that's, that's annoying to people, but that's what the court requires us to do. We always hear that. Why did you send us multiple notices? We have to do that, the law requires it. We would prefer just to send one per address, but we're just not allowed to do that. And that's what the current, current courtesy notice looks like. That's, that was just recently revised back in January. The original courtesy notice was revised, the one that I helped to create. And, and, and the resident helped to create, we were, we, we created that, we revised it again. And then this is the third version that you see now. So, but, you know, it's still a work in progress, and we get, we get good results with the, with the, with the courtesy notices. So we, we would like to keep doing them, as opposed to going back to just sending notices of violation. I, I thought that the, the courtesy notice is a, is a softer approach, it's easier to do, and it, and it's, and it, and it's very cost effective. The courtesy notices right now, the last batch I bought, I think they're about. Twelve cents a piece, something like that. They're pretty cheap, much cheaper than, than mailing a letter to the house, that's for sure. So, that's, that's our motivation behind, behind having the courtesy notices.
All right, thank you.
Sure, anybody have any questions?
Jessica, I think, I think Jessica froze. Yep, I don't know, so I wanted to, thank you, I wanted to say thank you, I knew. Going back to having the courtesy notices was, is really important, and I know you've been revising them and. Oh, Jessica's back, okay, you froze there for a second, Jessica. Yeah, I think there's, and I appreciate the revising them in January. Because I do think people were, like, some people, and maybe not all people, but a good, a good portion of people when they got it. Were feeling like that was a violation, right? They were getting a violation, even though it said avoid a violation, it felt like they were getting a violation. And hopefully with the change that will, and the emphasis on helping you would be good. I guess one of the things that. I'd be curious about, and I know some of these things are written into our code, so it's not necessarily. Like your discretion, but it, you're following what our rules are, so it might be that if we wanna go back and look at things, we need to kinda change that. But the time between a courtesy notice and then a notice of violation, five to ten days. But I, I'm just trying to like, get my head around, like, are you, you all feel like that is appropriate? Is it enough time for people? In general?
Well, if the, if the homeowner calls us and says, hey, I don't think I can get it done in, in ten days, can I have another five days or something like that? We're flexible. We don't have a problem giving them an extension. All the deadlines, all, excuse me, all the deadlines are really, that, the, the, the code enforcer has the opportunity to extend any deadline. As long as they want, as long as they feel like the, the homeowner's trying to make some progress in resolving the issue.
Kiss me. Who is that? Sorry, when, when you put up the, the courtesy notice, I'm just wondering if that is clear enough for folks. To really call and, and like discuss that. I, I think, you know, again, you had a number of cases there. And I think each of us on the city council probably hear about a number of different ones, and so I know I, I just. I hear from folks when there's confusion and about, you know, is this a courtesy notice? Did I get a violation? And then five to ten days, I'm just curious about, like, particularly under COVID. We've had some people who, you know, were at home because they were, you know, taking care of a sick parent or whatever. Like, you go on vacation, you might be gone for more than five or ten days. And then you go immediately, if no one contacts you all, you go from a notice to a violation. So I, I guess I'm just sort of feeling like that might be a little fast, and whether or not we wanna revisit that. In terms of going from a notice to a violation in five to ten days.
We could be flexible with that. I mean, i, if, if council feels like it should be a longer period, we, we can certainly accommodate their, their desire.
Yeah, Rick, I mean, I know to a certain extent, our property maintenance code mirrors the counties. So is, are our timelines meant to add up to just an initial thirty-day period? I mean, I noticed that the time period between the court courtesy notice and the notice of violation adds up to a full thirty days. I think the county gives people thirty days. Is that why that, that was selected originally, or?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's no, there's no law saying that we can't change that, I, I don't, I don't think, you know, we, we, we follow the general guidelines in Montgomery County. For the simple reason that we've adopted a large portion of the Montgomery County code. And also, when we go to court, we're in the Montgomery County Court system.
Right.
The drive behind some of that stuff is, you know, hey, hey, we are a part of Montgomery County, we're going to their courts, so, you know, we kinda follow their guidelines. But if, if we wanna become, give people more time on the, the courtesy notice, I, I, I think we certainly have, we can do that. I, I don't think that's gonna cause any, any major problems.
Cool. And the other thing that I think has. Become an issue is. How, how complaints are, you know, how, what, what instigates a courtesy notice? Like, how, like, how it happens, and I think there's just been a lot of questions among residents and neighbors. Are people calling in and complaining about a neighbor, and then you all go out and all of that? Like, could you just unpackage that for us a little bit, like?
Yeah, I've, I've gotten complaints in the mail. I've gotten complaints by email. I've gotten complaints by my TKPK. I've gotten complaints via telephone. I've gotten complaints by people walking into the police station. And some of the cases are generated by, just a drive-by inspection that the inspector might be doing. They could be out, you know, checking on some cases, and they see a, a violation, they'll leave a courtesy notice. So the cases come in all different ways.
And when somebody brings, brings in a, a complaint or notifies you. Do we take anonymous complaints, or do we usually, yeah?
Yeah, people are allowed to file their complaints without divulging their identity.
And on that topic, jumping in, so most of what you respond to are, are complaints. So this is essentially a complaint-based system at this point, or is there a fair amount of? Or is there a fair amount of um, inspector-driven? Um, either by neighborhood or by topic or whatever, inspector-driven um?
I think right now there's more inspector-driven than there are um, citizen complaints.
Is that on account of COVID or is that on account of something you've changed in the past couple of years?
Uh, I don't know. Previously, the, the position of code enforcement was they, they tended to just, just to wait on complaints to come in.
Mm-hmm.
When Neighborhood Services was created, um, the direction that I was given from the city manager was that they want, they wanted us to be more proactive.
Mm-hmm.
Not just sit back and wait for complaints to come in, to try to do some patrolling and, and, and initiate complaints on our own. Um, so that's what we've done.
Mm-hmm.
Now, for a while, we only had um, one code inspector working. So of course, there was, there was less cases being generated because of that.
Mm-hmm.
And I tried to assist as best I could, but I was also trying to do other things at the same time, so. I was trying to help, but I probably wasn't providing a whole lot of help.
Mm-hmm.
So now that we have two full-time uh, code inspectors out there, um, yeah, more cases are, are coming in than, than, than had in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And do we keep, when we keep data on um, either the courtesy notices or the violations, do we have any data on um, people's race or ethnicity or parts of the city or anything like that to keep track of? And you know, it's for the courtesy notices if you just leave them, but for the notices of violation?
Yeah, a lot of times we don't really meet people. You know, we just, uh, in fact, most of the times, we don't meet the homeowners, so we don't know anything about their um, age, race, or anything like that. Um, we just have their names, that's it.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, we don't um, we don't really target any areas, you know, more than others. We go all over the city. It's, it's very random.
Mm-hmm.
And the, I've heard this before and, and I think um, one of the um, members of the public who are here tonight talking, um, mentioned this, the um, the need to ticket multiple members of the household, is that in our code? Is that?
That's Montgomery County courts require that.
They do.
Yeah, they require that all, everybody on the deed gets notified of a violation.
Gets notified, but the, the question I have is, do, must they, then?
They have to be, they have to, they have to receive documents, yeah, had that, documents have to be addressed to them.
Right, but then if they do get, if we do ticket them, if we, if we find them, what happens then is from what I understand, not just the person who testified tonight, but other instances I've heard of is, then you, you get a fine for each person who is on the deed of the house. So if it's a five hundred, you get like two five hundred dollar fines for something.
No, we wouldn't. No.
Okay, well then I think we need to check into the case that we had this evening, um, the woman who spoke earlier.
She said was that she had received a citation and who, whoever, I, was it her husband? I, I can't remember what, who she said.
Yeah.
She said her husband had also received a citation. But there, but, but both of them do not have to pay. In fact, rarely do people pay any fines.
I think that's another area we need to clarify because I think that's not clear to people. Like, if they're both receiving a fine in the mail, is that something we send out or is that being sent out through the court system? How, how do they?
We send out the citations. Yeah, they're mailed out by us.
Well, Mayor, if I can just say, I think
Yeah, yeah.
in the case of Ms. Gar, who, who spoke earlier, and I have spoken with her, she's spoken in public comment period. Her understanding, well, you know, there's a separate question about the citation at all from her point of view, but her understanding was that both she and her husband had to pay and it would be, it would be the two added together and I don't know that it's clear from the way the citations are worded, that maybe there's some requirement that two listed people who are co-homeowners or whatever, it might be both get it, but that they, if they were in the end required to pay it, then only one would have to be paid. And that's a huge difference. And if that's not clear to people, it needs to be made clear somehow.
Yeah, we send a uh, wi- with, along with the citation, we send a citation transmittal letter. I'll review the letter to see exactly what it says. And perhaps we could put some verbiage in there that would indicate that not everybody that, you know, just because you receive two tickets, it doesn't mean everybody has to pay. But like I said, rarely do people pay anything. Because when they go to court, if they choose to go to court, um, the judges are very lenient. Um, if, if, let's say, for example, Ms. Gar decides she wanted to go to court, I can guarantee you the judge would immediately suspend the fines and give her like sixty days to comply. That's what happens all the time.
I know, but I think what we're trying to do is avoid this. Quite frankly, because I, I would like to see how, um, and you know, Rick and I, like, we've had this conversation before, that's why I like to put like, you know, call for help or something is, you know, avoiding people having to go to court, even if they get their fine waived, I would think would be our goal here. And, and, and to even get people to rectify a situation or receive the help they needed regarding a situation when we've given them a courtesy notice, even before we've, we head to the violation.
Mayor, could I, could I interject something?
Sorry, I feel like I'm, I might be monologuing, sorry, jump in. And Councilwoman Garcia's had her hand up too.
Oh, why don't you go first, Talisha, sorry.
Thank you. Um, so, you know, I, I, I'm of two minds of this issue. Um, on one side, I have a number of residents um, who complain about how certain properties are maintained. Um, and then on the other hand, um, typically, the um, maintenance of a home is indicative of a bigger issue. So what role do we play in trying to unpack some of the bigger issues that may be at play, right? Um, and so first I want to thank you, Rick, because um, during the pandemic, correct me if I'm wrong, we suspended um, uh, Neighborhood Services citations. Um, and there were a couple of cases, although I agree with what folks have brought up, we, we maybe need to do a better job in terms of some of the um, some of the communications that are going out to make sure that people aren't alarmed when they receive those notifications. Um, but one of the things that, that I appreciate you and the team doing was helping us to identify um, a couple of cases where through the Neighborhood Services citation, we found seniors that were actually in need of home repairs and they were struggling because they needed help with identifying um, contractors. It brought in neighbors, it created a vehicle, albeit, you know, we could work on the delivery. Um, but it, it, it did create um, an opportunity to identify those homeowners that need that extra support. Um, so one question I have, and I know, I, I don't know to what extent, and I, I do believe that you've been, you and Grace have worked together
Yeah.
a little bit. Um, to, to what extent do we provide um, some of that additional information? So let's say, we give that courtesy. Let's say that courtesy, somebody has chip paint around their door, right? They need to get their home painted. Um, you all give that courtesy notice. Um, to what extent, when people call you and say, I can't afford this, I'm going through financial hardship, do you all um, transfer them to um, HCD or to, to housing to see whether or not they may qualify for some of our housing funds that may be available to help with repairs?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Also, uh, we help them identify social service agencies that are available, like Rebuilding Montgomery is one of them. Habitat for Humanity, we've done that, we've given those people, that they have to apply, we can't apply for them. But we do give contact information, and if you're having money troubles, you can't quite get this work done, perhaps you should reach out to this organization, they might be able to help you. Yeah.
And so I,
Our goal is always to get the work done. We're not in the fine business. If you told us we never had to go to court again, we'd be very happy to hear that. Really would be. We don't like going to court, we don't like issuing fines. It's, it's not our, it's not our nature, it's, it's not the line of work that we're really in. We're not here to punish people, we're here to help maintain the community, you know, to, to keep Tacoma Park uh, an, an attractive community and a nice place that people want to come and live, you know?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's, that's helpful and, and the points that the mayor and others are raising, I think are very valid, you know? How we're communicating the role of Neighborhood Services, um, making sure that people understand that it is not just a gotcha, sometimes you do get complaints. Um, also making sure that we're kind of um, taking a proactive approach in terms of directing residents that may be having some of those home issues to the right service. So, you know, it could mean, instead of giving someone five to ten days, I, I would, I would agree, I don't know what that means. Give me a, a strict fourteen-day deadline to follow up, that might be appropriate. Um, if there's some blurb at the end, that maybe if you're experiencing, please let us know in a different color, if you're experiencing financial hardships, you, you know, certain things that we may be able to do to try to, to make that connection. Um, because again, I, I, given what I've seen in my ward, it's, it is a bit of a um, usually, it's, it's a bigger issue. From not just seniors, mental health, emotional, there's a lot of things that come into play that usually ref- comes across in terms of how people, the exterior of their home or how they manage their property. Um, so again, I just want to reiterate the importance of us kind of coordinated in that regard. Um, while keeping in mind that I think the team provides a very valuable service. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Okay, um, let's see, I had Councilwoman Dabala's hand isn't working, but I think Councilmember Kovar was next, then Dabala, then Kostik, who just disappeared, no, there you are.
I appreciate um, Mayor scheduling this um, session because I think it's an, an important one and I, and I have heard from a number of people in Ward One who have had concerns about this and as mentioned, Ms. Gar spoke of earlier, and I don't mean to just highlight her, I also heard, I just received an email in the middle of the meeting from Angelique Patel, who was, I'm pronouncing her first name correctly, was unable to attend, but she had a situation also where she had materials on the front porch and had some concerns about it. And I guess I would say first off, um, you know, it's a letter from the police is what it amounts to, and that is not just a simple thing for most people. And so I think the language is important and I'm glad that the mayor has suggested some changes be made. But when you get an official communication like that, you know, a lot of people who don't interact all the time with the government can find that to be kind of a um, something that causes anxiety and stress. I just received a letter in the mail from a, a trip I took to another country three years ago, saying that I had exceeded the speed limit and, you know, fortunately the document translated, and so I'm trying to figure that out. When you get something like that, it's not just, oh, it's just this, it's just this document. And the fact that, and I su- supported this when it was suggested a few years back, but the fact that this team is now in the police, hasn't added, in the police department, hasn't added um, well, it's not a cachet, it's the opposite of cachet, an added component of what might seem threatening to people. And so I think as part of the task force work, um, reimagining well, safety task force, that might be something to look at. But in terms of Ms. Gardner, Ms. Patel in particular, and this is, this is the question, I think, they have materials on their, on their porches. And so what does it mean to define something as, as rubbish or uh, something that isn't just being stored there temporarily? And if somebody doesn't have somewhere else to store, or if they moved in recently and they had their boxes on the porch, which is true of um, Ms. Patel, and they were recycling those and giving them to other neighbors, that to me is different. Or if there's material temporarily moved out of the home, which is Ms. Gar's situation. Um, while they were doing some renovations, that's different from people just leaving uh, garbage or trash on the porch. And, you know, I haven't conducted individual um, uh, examinations of, of their home. So I, you know, I, I defer in terms of the expertise to the, the people in Neighborhood Services, but I, but I do think you might want to figure out more specifically, you know, what are people allowed to have on, on their front porches? If they put it on their back porch, it's fine, it's on the, on the, on the front porch, maybe it isn't. And this gets back to, I think, what council, what uh, member of Siswa was talking about. We need to do more problem solving, I think. And, you know, there was a hoarding case uh, earlier last year and it eventually became a police situation. That shouldn't really be a police kind of situation. The cases I'm talking about tonight, though, aren't, aren't hoarding, it's just much more simple cases of there's some materials on, on the porch. So I think some sort of clarification of what's allowed and what's not allowed. And, and if there's a difference, if the people in the home are responding but not doing exactly what Neighborhood Services i- is saying, it just doesn't seem to me that it, it should get to the violation part. So I, my appeal would be that we look a little bit more closely at how the rubbish or related terms are defined and try to understand what's allowable and what isn't. And, and Rick, I'd be happy if you want to respond to that, I know that was kind of a a long.
Well, it, it can be difficult as to where to draw the line. And I, I think what's, you know, what I would like to see happen is, you know, for council to say, hey, listen, if it's on the front porch, don't worry about it. You know, but I, I realize that that can cause some issues, you know? Things I've seen stored on the porch, uh, twenty-five buckets of paint. Um, tires, disassembled motorcycles, car parts, um, old furniture. Um, black bags full of something, I don't know what, maybe old clothes or whatever. Um, you know, to what extent do we, do, do people want to use their front porches as storage? And to what extent do we think it's appropriate to let them do that?
Well, I think a big part of that is how long-term versus short-term it is, because I agree with you, and, and Councilmember Siswa said this also. It is reasonable to have requirements that apply so that
Yeah.
properties are, are kept in, in good shape. But it seems to me there's a difference between something that's being done on a shorter-term basis, maybe while some renovations are occurring and so on, uh, versus things that are just left out there forever in our, in our rubbish. And, and that's, I think, where it, it can be hard when it's a enforcement person who's just getting a, a brief snapshot view to understand the difference between those two things. I think that's what we need to try to move toward.
Well, and time can be very subjective. To some people, three or four months isn't a long period of time. But if you're the person who's complaining, it's, it's an eternity, you know? It's difficult to draw the lines.
Right, but if there is a renovation, that, I won't take any more time after this, but a, a typical renovation is going to take four months.
So we should allow four months of storage?
Well, I'm not saying specifically, but I just think there has to be some sensitivity to that.
Yeah, well, we do try to be sensitive, but sometimes people, they'll give us these things, well, I'm not sure when it's going to be removed. Or we had a, a guy, uh, a couple of days ago, he asked for an extension till the end of the year. You know, it's, where do you draw the lines? You know, we, we have to draw the line somewhere and, and sometimes people get offended where, where, where we draw the line, you know?
Alright, well, I, I think a little more flexibility there would be helpful. Thank you.
We'll strive for that.
Um, Councilman Dabala, you're next, because you can't raise your hand tonight, right?
Right, thank you. Um, I, I was gonna say that, that a consistency would be useful rather than arbitrary flexibility. And um, I want to thank you for everything you've done in Ward Two. I know some people get pretty mad at you, but a whole lot of other people really uh, like what, like the, like the services that you and your team provide and the responsiveness that you have to individuals who run into issues with complying. Um, and of course, the environmental education and enforcement is very popular in Ward Two. Thank you for that as well. Um, I
Welcome.
want to ask quickly, um, what are your, speaking of education, what are your thoughts, since I know that you do it for environmental issues? What are your thoughts on uh, code education? And what are your thoughts, if any, on code changes that would help you to do your job? And what are your thoughts, if any, on code changes that would help you to do your job? Um, more effectively with residents?
Well, I I it sounds like maybe some members of council would like us, maybe the the guideline should be more specific. You know, and take away some of the sensitivity of the inspectors. That that's possible. You know, as as far as education goes, I was thinking I should maybe put a little something in the newsletter about.
That would be good. I like that.
You know, to to kind of get the word out.
Yeah.
I mean, it certainly wouldn't hurt anything.
Yeah, the it's interesting to hear you, um, and and then just finally, um. It's interesting to hear you say that, uh, more than half of your, um. Your cases are 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 not complaint generated, because the thing I hear the most often is why me?
Yeah.
Why my house? Why my property? Why we? Why were you? I don't mean this literally, but I people ask, why were you all picking on on me?
Right.
Um, and it seems in fact that there's more of a system. So I think that's why I'm asking about ways to get the word out. Education and information on code. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to to piggyback while we're talking about education, I was also thinking, you know, one of the things that I think a lot of folks don't know is the reason why, um. Uh, cars on gra- parking cars on grass, um, is 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 a code violation. Um, and there are a lot of environmental issues related to that. Um. I know. So I I was, and the other thing is rats. We do have rats in the city. And I know some people do like to put things out, um. Uh, and Rick, as you said before, even just having things, um, on your porch or other things like we do, we do have a problem with rats in certain areas. And I know you know that really well. And I want to thank you for your help, um, in a number of situations. Um, but I also think maybe doing, um, some, a series in the newsletter that, because I think if people also know why certain things are in place. It it's, it helps them understand, like, why can't I park my car on the grass? Well, these, this is why it's bad for the environment or all this other stuff, you know, like, why can't I put this just out on my, you know, curb for someone to take if it's food in like an open container or something like. Well, we can't leave that out there all night long because you know, we have rats and other other things. So I I do think like it might be helpful in the future to think about maybe a series of newsletter articles that provide the reason behind why we do certain things with code enforcement. And I I think, as you said before, Rick, I wrote down, it's like, it's, you said, it's not about finding people. It's about like maintaining our community.
Yeah.
Um, but I I just, I I think he- hearing you say that is really important and making sure people understand what you're, what you're in the the rest of the folks in Neighborhood Services, like what you all even just see as your job and how you see it is really important, because people just see it on the other end. When they get, as as Councilmember Kovar said, when they're just like, oh, I'm getting this, um, and they, and, you know, they do feel singled out, um, and things. So anyway, that's just, I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilman Dibala said, and maybe we could think about doing some of that, because I, because I know when I've explained to people some of the reasons why we have things, it's like, oh, I never thought about that before.
Yeah. We can try to do more education. Won't hurt anything. Yeah.
Yeah. And and as a final question, which may not be for Rick. Will the police, will the Public Safety Task Force be looking at the question of whether parking and code enforcement and all of that should be in the police department? Does anybody?
So, so I can speak from the perspective of nothing has been, um, ruled out for the Public Safety Task Force. They have been asked to think about public safety in the broader sense during the, um, so it's not just about, you know, policing per se. The last meeting, um, they also brought up, uh, pedestrian safety and things such as that. So, um. One thing that we can do is give Link a quick note, Jessica. Um, just, uh, because Neighborhood Services is a part of the police um, annual reports and a number of the materials that, um, as part of the policing budget and things that the task force has been provided, I'm pretty sure it's something they may want to consider. But we can, for that Link is aware that of of this conversation, and maybe they want to share this segment of the council meeting with the with the task force.
I think it's worth a look. Thanks very much.
Great. Um, Councilman Kostic, Smith, and then Siemens.
Thank you very much. Um, this has been really a great conversation, I think, and the information you provided, Rick, has been really helpful in terms of understanding what you're doing and why. And I think, as others have said, it's helpful to kind of get the context of not, you know, not the aim of punishing people, but but having there be a reason behind the enforcement that we're doing. Um, I have one question and then just a couple of thoughts based on, um, what others have said and kind of some research I had done prior to this. Um. So I was doing some research, um, before, uh, the meeting, just sort of looking up what other cities were doing and what types of, um. Processes might be helpful in terms of addressing, um, making sure that code enforcement is done in an equitable way and that it's a really positive experience rather than a negative one for people. And some of the things, um, that I found were recommendations to institutionalize equity as part of the process and really make sure that there's a strong equity focus. Um, and actual consideration of equity questions, which I think would be a great, um, addition to what's happening here. I think that it's, it sounds like some of that is happening sort of organically, but there might be an effective way to kind of institutionalize some of that with some some standardized questions to think through or to to talk with. Um, a- among staff, um, when something is is coming up. Um. Oh, additionally, um. Connecting with other departments, and I think Councilmember seriously really made a great point that a lot of times where these, um, situations are happening, it's because there's something else going on, um, and residents might be in need of assistance. Um, so I really like the idea of adding something to the information that maybe helps, um, connect people, uh, to assistance, not just in terms of paying their fees or making the, um. Making the adjustments they need to make, but actually to getting assistance, maybe on a broader range of, um, of things that they may need assistance with, whether it's affording um, their, um, electrical bills or whatever that they might be struggling with. Um, so I wonder if there might be some ways that we could actually connect more across departments um, and and kind of bring in, um, some other staff into the process and really help make those connections. Um, I also like the idea of looking at whether we could move, um. Move the Neighborhood Services operations out of the police department to take the, um. Uh, the the police aspect and the, um. Enforcement aspect, I think, out of it a little more, um, in terms of how people see the department and the code enforcement that is happening. Um. The other thing was, um, I, some of the reading I did, um. Called for kind of making code enforcement a part of building community, which I thought was a really interesting sort of concept. And, um, I wondered if there might be some ways to do that through education and outreach. Um, I'm not sure exactly what that would look like, but I think some of our discussions tonight might be an opportunity to, um, help build community and make connections rather than making people feel kind of isolated or or singled out when there's an um, a a notice, a courtesy notice that they get. Um, I would really like to see uh, if we could collect data specifically on where the courtesy notices and or violations are. I I understand it's difficult to get, um, into necessarily who is receiving them, but I think we could probably map out the addresses where they are, um, being received. And I think that might be helpful just to get a sense of where in the city, um. The majority are happening. And then maybe if there are specific places that need outreach or assistance, uh, that might help us target those to for assistance. Um. The the question I had was, I wondered how we can um, or if we should, um. Kind of review some aspects that might currently be violations that maybe don't warrant being violations, so that we really are focusing most specifically on health and safety issues rather than the more aesthetic issues. Um, and it seems like kind of from our conversation about what what you can have on the front porch, for example, that there may be a level at which it's a danger because of a fire hazard if people have so much stuff on their front porch. But it might also be just an aesthetic issue. And so I wondered if there are things you've seen that you think, um, and you don't have to answer right now in in depth, that I'd be happy to sort of hear anything you have, um, if you want to take some time and think it through. Um. But if there are things you've seen that maybe don't necessarily need to be, um. Part of the enforcement that we're doing or or might be helpful to kind of consider.
A a lot of what we do is is urban blight. That's the definition that's used for it. It's visual blight. You know, it offends your eye. It's not necessarily a safety violation, but it is offensive to the eye. You know, why, why should that be enforced? You know, well. You know, people ask that question and and you know, visual blight, it affects people's self-esteem. It affects their property values. I I think it it promotes civility. Um, you know, we've had cases where people have maintained their houses really nice and the next door neighbor doesn't, and they get angry. You know? Um, so I I think there's, there's, there should always be room for in enforcement and prevention of, uh, visual blight. Uh, I I don't think it should be taken off the the table completely. Um, we do safety issues, but most of it, most of what we do is not safety related, you know? I mean, obviously, if you don't maintain your front porch, eventually you could collapse that sort of thing. But most of it, um. At least the level that we're coming into the these cases, it's not a safety issue yet. But we're trying to to prevent that from happening. Uh, but mostly it's it's visual blight. That's what we're trying to prevent. Yeah.
Thank you. I I think as we kind of continue to consider this, it might be useful for us to think through if there are aspects of visual blight that we want to reconsider and what those might be. I think that's definitely a a longer and and more in-depth conversation, but it might be worth having in the future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Sorry, um, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. If if you were to look at uh, the violations in Ward Five. Uh, what type of numbers are we talking about? Complaints and actual uh, formal violation?
I I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
Okay. Do you know if you get, uh, more complaints regarding multifamilies or single family residences?
I would say in Ward Five, probably multifamilies more.
And is it coming from the tenants? Do you know, or is it? You know, because a lot of these apartment buildings are next to single family homeowners. Are they the ones that initiated the complaints or or do you don't have any records?
I think that most of the complaints are coming, uh, are generated by us. The inspector goes by and sees a lot of it. Mostly it's trash related complaints. Uh, you know, a lot of the apartment buildings, um, you know, the trash cans are overflowing. People don't put trash in the dumpsters. Um, they'll throw their furniture out by the dumpster or put it out in front of the building, that sort of thing. A lot of that happens.
So, you know, we have the, uh, the bulk pickup, um. Regulation. Is it when you see that, how does that go through our system? And how is it removed? Do we just tell Public Works or do you send a message to Public Works to say, hey? Uh, I saw, you know, this couch outside, this mattress, tires, and have them come and remove it. Then we track down the landlord of that property and have them uh, pay the fine. Or how do we, you know, um, track something that has uh, a a bulk uh, trash out in the front of a property?
It's always, uh, we have to give the property owner the the opportunity to remove the problem. By wha- whatever means they want to use. Either they can remove it themselves, or they can hire somebody to remove it. Or they can, um, arrange a bulk pickup, which of course has to be paid for. Bulk pickup is not free.
Right.
We can't, we can't, we can't ask a Public Works to do a bulk pickup. We're just not allowed to do that. What people, what people do, though, is if if you are a landlord and you told me, well, I I've arranged for a bulk pickup, we would verify that you've done that if I call in Public Works.
I th- I think it's something that we need to consider, especially in wards that have a large multifamily, um. Population to if we see a bunch of stuff out front, we need to pick it up. And then we need to figure out tracking down the money later, because it just becomes this huge eyesore. We have stuff, you know. Couches. Uh, tires in front of buildings. Um, la- last question, and y- you your, um, focus is exterior properties, correct? Not, you don't go inside properties.
Correct. We don't do any interior inspections of any properties.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Um, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. And, uh, Rick, I'd like to start out by just thanking you for uh, kind of your dedication and focus on this, uh, on this. Just listening to you tonight, it's clear that, uh, you've taken on the impossible task of trying to figure out what it is the council really wants. And, uh, and do your best to, uh, to get your guys to to do that. And I, um, and I'm serious. I mean, you, uh, uh, you've come across as, uh, as really having your heart in this and and, uh, I appreciate that. Um.
You're welcome.
And, um. Yeah, I think you've probably been here long enough to remember. I have never been enthusiastic, uh, with the, um. This, uh, type of code enforcement. Um, I know that there are some situations where it is needed. Um, and, um, and I think that those are all, uh, complaint driven. Um, the, um. Uh, I am, uh. I am against the idea of, uh, of the drive-bys and and, um. Uh, just singling out people if, you know, if it's, if it's good in the neighborhood and nobody's, uh, you know, concerned about it in the neighborhood. Um. But I think it should be okay. And and if, uh, uh, if somebody's coming from another neighborhood to complain about it, that seems pretty ridiculous, too. Anyways, I, um. I appreciate, uh, the work you've done, uh, with the department and, uh, and I, um. Um, I was trying to remember the other, uh, the other point that, um. Jared was making with the multifamily, uh, buildings that, um. You know, the the trash situation there, I think, is a lot different than than most of the, uh, the types of things you see in the single family homes. Uh, I think that is something that is a constant, uh, uh, thorn in the side of, uh. Uh, and and I understand it's difficult for the property owners, because, uh, people dump things by the dumpsters, uh. Maybe from the tenants of the building and maybe from somebody driving down the street with a work truck that wanted to unload the stuff. So it's a bad situation. I think it's a a, uh, a thing where it is very appropriate for for your inspectors to notice those kind of things and and report them, but, uh. Guess it's about, uh, covered all the bases there. You, uh. Uh, I appreciate you're trying to figure out what we want and and you've missed me some. Because I'm not for the drive-bys. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Um, Councilman Cercy, do you have your hands up? Are you?
Yes, I just want to echo, um, Councilmember Smith and Siemens', um, point about multifamily, um, buildings and, um, trash management and you know, dumping in neighborhoods and how all of this, this is circular, right? It's it's a very hard place to be in. Um, you know, as the point that was raised earlier about the mice, right? So you have trash, you have residents who maybe leave their trash cans at the curb all week. That trash then manages to make its way down the street. Um, then you're right next to a state highway and people see trash in the neighborhood and they feel comfortable throwing their trash, too. They feel like, you know what, the people who live there don't care what's with me. So I do think that it is important for us to keep um, all of these factors in mind and how we actually address them. There's a plethora of approaches. Um, but but I will reiterate, it is a problem, particularly in my ward. Um, in terms of litter, in terms of trash management on multifamily properties, in terms of some maintenance issues that some homes have, and particularly vacant homes as well. Vacant properties is another big thing. And what are we doing to make sure that those properties do not bring down the overall feel of our community, I think is important.
I agree.
Great. Well, I think this was a helpful discussion. I, Rick, I hope you felt that way too. And hopefully there were, I think this is an ongoing conversation, you know, just as we talked about maybe getting more education out there to residents about the work that you and everyone in Neighborhood Services does. We know that the, the task force will be looking at some, you know, as they look at public safety issues across the board, I think Neighborhood Services is part of that. And so some of the things that I think were raised tonight to look into is whether or not it would be a good idea to expand the courtesy notice time from when someone gets a courtesy notice to a violation and maybe letting us know your thoughts on that. Clarifying when people do get multiple citations because their names are on a deed that they only have to pay one of those fines. That we talked a lot about, you know, maybe revisiting again the courtesy notice and making sure that people know that we're, we want to provide assistance and connect them to other departments we have. And yeah, I'm sure there's other things that I missed, but those were the highlights I had in my notes. And do want to just thank you for your assistance in, you know, connecting people to other departments and getting them help. I definitely know, heard a lot of those stories as well. So we'll continue the conversation and thank you and thank your whole team for coming tonight.
Hey, you're welcome. It's our pleasure.
Great. Awesome. All right. Our next work session is on a pre-budget briefing on vehicle replacements, technology, recreation department plans.
That's right. So Madam Mayor, our next, we'll be presenting the preliminary budget to you on April 7th. There are a couple of topics we wanted to get a head start on in providing the council with some background information. These are follow-ups from previous discussions we've had in recent hearings. So this evening I'm joined by our Public Works Director and Fleet Manager. They're going to give a very short, given the late hour overview of our fleet review committee process. You'll be reviewing the proposed vehicle purchases as part of the capital budget coming up, but we didn't want to just give a refresher on what our process is for formulating our proposals for vehicle purchases for the capital budget. And then we'll follow that with a brief overview from our Recreation Director on the reopening plans for the Recreation Department, followed by some background information from our IT Director. So Daryl and Keith, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. I think the cover sheet pretty much has a pretty succinct overview of the fleet review committee and its role. It was established a few years ago. We've always had a criteria for vehicle replacement based on age and miles.
Yeah, you're going in and out a little bit. Can you, can you lean in a little bit?
Oops, sorry. So what the Fleet Review Committee did was formalize the process and put everything down on paper. It established a fleet review committee that includes the Deputy Director, Deputy City Manager, myself, our Vehicle Maintenance Supervisor, Captain with the Police Department. And am I missing someone? Can't remember. Anyway, there's a, it's a multi, multi-department effort. Keith Perry, our Vehicle Maintenance Supervisor pulls together the information based on maintenance records. And we have one and usually several meetings amongst the committee to review the vehicles slated for replacement. If anybody's interested in seeing the age and mileage criteria that we use, that's, that's currently in the policy itself, and I'm happy to share that chart. Police vehicles are an eight-year replacement cycle. Many public works vehicles are a 10 to 13-year replacement cycle. And then we have others that are based on condition without a a definite mileage or age amount. One of the things to note in the city of Tacoma Park, because we are such a compact city, it's very hard to get mileage. Most of our, certainly our admin pool vehicles and some of the public works department vehicles to gain any substantial mileage. So we do have some variation in our mileage criteria. We also use a maintenance, maintenance cost criteria and look at accidents and things like that to generate a condition report for the vehicle. So as vehicles become eligible for replacement based on age, miles or condition, they're reviewed. And then we make recommendations that are then put into the budget. That is primarily focused on vehicles that exist and are to be replaced. For vehicles that are going to be added to the fleet, the department is required to put a submission into the Vehicle Review Committee that analyzes the need for the vehicle and then renders a decision to the City Manager, and it either gets added to the budget or not. The same can be said for the transfer of vehicles. So in addition to the meeting and the analysis that's done before the budget is submitted each year, we also then, at the beginning of the budget, review the vehicle purchases that were approved with the affected department, talk to them about how they want to schedule those replacements timing-wise, and then assist with making those purchasing procurement things that then come to the council. There can also be changes mid-year, you know, if a vehicle is damaged or totaled in an accident, that warrants a different kind of a need. So we do keep in touch, you know, for, for the most, most intensive purposes. It's the Police Department and the Public Works Department that have the largest fleet, so we're the ones that are more likely to have vehicles for replacement. But the other departments do have small fleets and they come up as well. And that's pretty much the process.
Great. All right. Are there any questions for Daryl, Chief, or Keith? I want to let them go while we, before we move on to the other topics.
No, I just want to say I'm glad that you all, I know this is something that's fairly new in the last few years, and I think it, it has been helpful, I think, for council and when you all do report and come back and have your recommendations. I feel like it's another kind of check on when we need to purchase vehicles. So thank you for, for the work you do and it's good to be reminded of the work you do. So appreciate you being here. And thank you, Keith, for being here and being here so late.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Greg, are you ready to talk about reopening?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Everyone, yay. Recreation, we are on the cusp of reopening for, we're going to actually start out with aftercare. Aftercare will begin on April the 12th. Staff has been preparing for the past few months. It's been an intensive process, of course, trying to make sure that everything is in accordance with the state and local officials in regards to COVID and the safety measures. We are, as a part of our aftercare program, we are planning to have, there will be room restrictions, there'll be limitations as far as the number of kids and staff per per room in each facility. So we will actually take less kids for that particular program. We've actually reached out to the county ICB and to find out if we can use additional, the school space. And we found out that we aren't able to use the school space right away, you know, to host our aftercare programs. So we're going to have them in our own facilities. Once aftercare is completed, we're going to move into summer camps. Now, while summer camps and aftercare is going on, we aren't going to allow, our plan is to not allow anyone else in the building, so we'll limit the number of activities that we're having there just to, so that we can make sure the staff are safe and the kids are safe as well. During the summer, we will have classes and things outside. We're actually going to begin outside classes soon in April, so that residents can begin to enjoy recreational activities and, you know, exercise classes and other types of classes outside as well as teens and kids. And once we start back in the fall, we will just have aftercare in the facility as well, or we'll continue with our outside opportunities as well as virtual opportunities too. Our plan is to actually start in-person classes in January 22, which will be inside our home facilities. And that way we can make sure that, you know, that everyone is vaccinated. We can, you know, make sure that numbers and things from the Health Department and the state are where they need to be. And that we can safely have those classes and opportunities and move everyone back into the, into our facilities. So for the time being, when we do open up, we'll mainly be hosting childcare. We have a, an extensive, intensive cleaning regiment that will be taking part in, our staff will be taking part in, as well as Daryl's staff. So that is our plan in a nutshell. So are there any questions?
I think the City Manager reported last week, have, have you all been able to access vaccines for?
Yes, yes. I want to say the majority of our career staff have, have, have had at least the first vaccination, I believe. The last one or two may be going this, sometime this week. And the part-time staff that we're bringing back to help with, assist with childcare, I believe are going tomorrow to get vaccinated. So yes, we've been able to take care of that. That's been the biggest hurdle. And I'm starting, you know, we want to make sure that staff are, you know, vaccinated. So when the kids come back, we can, you know, make sure that they're safe too, so.
Great. Thank you. Councilman DeBala?
Yeah, I, this is great. I'm, I'm so excited. I, I assume you are already over-enrolled for aftercare?
Not yet. And the enrollment information will be going out soon. It's a sort of tricky process because of the way that you have to perform these services now. Kids have to remain in pods. You can't mix the pods. You know, they, you have to have, you know, go to the bathroom, you know, together. You know, if a kid is, there's a lot of restrictions. So we have to register them in pods, so stay with their pods. So we're actually still working that out with the registration system to actually do that for us, which we should have it taken care of in the next day or so, but we are about, about, about ready, just about ready, so that we can start taking registrations and advertising things to that nation, so.
And will you be prioritizing any particular types of kids? Kids, several kids in one family, kids who were in camp, who were in, who were in programs before, people of a certain income, what?
Yeah, what, well,
Yeah.
The part right now is to take care of the families that are really in need, and we've set aside more than half of the enrollment for kids that are in need, or families that are in need. One of the things that we've done as well, which I've mentioned, I believe on another council meeting, that we have added to our scholarship program where we're now, we'll be accepting a hundred percent, hundred percent scholarships. And we have a new forum and, you know, getting the information out to the community. We have it on the website. We've just completed a PSA that will be aired on the city TV and that we'll be able to put on social media in regards to, you know, the families are really in need of the service and they want to participate, that they, they can participate. So yeah, there will be a priority on that.
And last question, looking to the future, is there a Plan A and B depending on how COVID goes, or are you just not going to try to open earlier with indoor, indoor stuff? You just going to count on January 20, January 22?
Well, that's the plan right now, and that's what we're putting in the budget, but, you know, of course, in, of council and the numbers and the Health Department say, you know, that we're ready to go, then it shouldn't take too long for recreation gear up. We are not bringing back front desk staff, so the only staff will be in the building right now will be staff that are working childcare. And we're going to, you know, strategically place career staff because we can't mix ourselves with the kids as well, so we each have to be with the pod. So it's, it's, it's an intensive process. So once we do decide to open back up, then we'll more than likely have to bring, you know, higher staff, make sure that they're vaccinated, bring them back, that sort of thing. So it'll be a process.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Kostick? Thank you very much. This is really exciting. Happy to see it happening. My older son went back to school a couple of weeks ago, I guess on the 15th, and it has been a huge difference for him. So this is exciting. I just have two questions, sort of logistical. One is with the pods, is there any capacity to look at what class they're in, in school and sort of prioritize people being with students they're already in, in their school classes, if that's possible, just to kind of minimize interaction across more groups of people? And then my second question was just if you had looked at all at more outdoor childcare rather than just the classes, but doing the childcare outdoors?
Let me address the latter first. Yeah, and the answer is yes. We will be doing a lot outdoors, of course, weather permitting, because that's the safest place to be. However, we've talked to a few recreation departments that have done this, and they said it's more difficult to keep the kids physically distanced outside. So we just have to make sure that we are on top of that, which is good information to have before we actually go back. So there's, it'll be a point of emphasis for our training. The first portion is it'll be difficult to actually have the kids in the pods based on their class. For instance, we've spoken with Tacoma Elementary, and they have very few people that have decided to, people, students that have decided to return. So they were anticipating a lot more. So where they have, I believe, one, they have all of the kids in one group. That won't be an issue. We reached out to Piney Branch, which we haven't heard back from yet to get the, their response to find out what's the anticipated return for their kids as well. But it may be kind of difficult based on the number of, of, of kids that are actually returning and parents that feel safe in having their kids return to school. So that'll be the only challenge with something like that. But we will as much as possible.
Thanks. Great. And I do know we've had updates from the Deputy City Manager and the City Manager that even though people really aren't in the community center, there's been a lot of work being done by public work staff on ventilation systems and other things. So just let people know that too.
We have a lot of, a lot of safety procedures in place in both buildings and in both facilities. So we're geared up and ready to go.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Oh, thank you.
We're looking forward to the pictures.
Oh, great.
All right. Thank you, Greg. So our final presentation is going to be a joint presentation between our Human Resources Director, IT Director, and Communications Specialist. Council has added new goals and strategies under the Engaged, Responsive, and Service-Oriented Government Priority. And so this is to really kick off the discussions related to the technology purchases that are going to support those new goals. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. And this is, this is the midnight special. All right. Everyone's drank their Red Bulls and we're gonna.
All right. Everyone's drank their Red Bulls and we're gonna power through here. All right. I'll turn it over to Lars to start us off.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. Uh, you can flip this slide here. Okay. As Jessica just mentioned, this is about the uh council goals, the new ones related to communication tools, uh, including the city website and how to increase public engagement. And uh, a goal of improving service delivery and, and uh our infrastructure systems for staff and how they interact and relate to residents. So, next slide. Okay, starting off with the, the website, uh, just a little bit of background. Uh, it was developed in two thousand and fifteen by a third party out of Baltimore, Maryland, and it was built in on a WordPress platform. I've got some statistics here on the number of websites that utilize uh WordPress. Uh, and you'll see of most significant there would be that a large percentage of them are you, uh, a large percentage of the websites in the Maryland municipal government uh utilize WordPress. And I think I came up with about forty-seven, forty-eight percent, although I didn't make it through the entire list. Uh, the uh list was provided by the Maryland Municipal League. Uh, there are about a hundred and sixty-five websites. I made it through about fifty or so. So uh basically, the, the uh takeaway here is that WordPress, WordPress is a very powerful platform and it's used by a lot of websites. The next item here is theme controls. The theme in WordPress is what determines what the websites look like. So some people have said they don't like the way the Tacoma Park website looks. And just so you know, that that is determined based on the theme. And you'll, we'll be talking a little bit more about that here in a minute. But that theme controls not only the look of the website, but also how the user, like our residents and, and people who use the website, how they go about navigating and using the environment. Also, uh, on a bright note, the website has a lot of searchable content in a full-text search engine. And uh, we're not sure if that seventeen thousand documents are, is accurate at this point, but it's a significant amount of content that we have available uh that you don't necessarily see throughout the website on the front end. So, next slide. Okay, some of the issues that uh users have brought up, the design. The design was based on uh block user interface, and that was uh popular style back in the two thousand and fifteen timeframe. Uh, that's since changed, but the website has not kept up because we have not uh made the proper investments in, in updating that uh design. And the IT department, basically what we are responsible for is patching the system. That would be the WordPress software, the database software that it runs on, the programming language that is used to serve up the website, and you know, plugins which extend the functionality of the website for uh for what, what kind of services that it provides. All of these software applications and, and uh components really need to be, uh, they all work together basically, and if they're not working together, things break. And that's basically what happened back in December. Uh, because our WordPress site hadn't been updated in a while. Uh, there's a reason for that. Some of the core software wouldn't run under the, under the specific databases. There are dependencies there. So that's why we had some problems. We've, we've gotten past those. So we are on a current environment uh for future development. You know, the other issues that we're having is that some of the uh, some of the plugins, which I had mentioned, that provide the uh functionality of the website, they're outdated or they're just free versions of software that date back to two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, when the site was de- designed and developed. There are much more modern plugins and themes available that would be able to give us a better user experience. And basically, the, the current theme that we are using, that the developer used back in two thousand and fifteen, it limits us with the, the uh menuing structure that we can utilize, how people utilize the so, uh, the, the website, and the display of posts, which is basically our communications. Uh, so basically, when we have mayor posts or um city manager posts and yeah, announcements, those are all uh posts in WordPress versus pages. There are two types of content, pages and posts. But those posts were restricted in how we display them, and those are basically the issues that we're having uh to date. So, next slide. So the recommendations that we have are that we would engage a third party uh to be able to redesign the website. It's basically that theme that I mentioned that controls what people see and also uh improve the functionality that's provided through the plugins. We should be able to improve the user experience and solve a lot of the issues that we've been hearing a little bit about from either residents or staff uh regarding the current site. We have a budget of, of about thirty-five thousand dollars that we think uh that's what it's going to take to do that work. The new design principles for the, for the website would be a clean uh layout. I mentioned that the old site used a block format, which block formatting uh involved a lot of uh high color and square boxes with not a lot of white space. So the, the new website will use more modern uh design techniques, uh, something called negative space, which means it, it'll have a lot of white space in between um uh design elements, and we won't have a lot of blocky style um screen layout. So uh, in addition to the budget that we need for the site redesign, we're gonna need to have a temporary staff to assist with the uh transition to a new site. That we're estimating to be about thirty-four thousand dollars. I mentioned earlier that there are quite a few websites that utilize um WordPress. One of them is Ocean City, Maryland. Wanted to just uh say a couple things about that. Uh, you can tell this is a clean design. There are two menus at the top of the screen, which if you're uh thinking about the Tacoma Park website, we have one menu at the top, one menu at the bottom, which is the standard default WordPress uh menu locations. The developer of this website basically modified the theme to get two menus at the top. And you can tell it's pretty clean. Front page has news as it's being scrolled down. And the only other thing I would point out is they also make use of a, if you go to the top, Jessica, and hover over the departments list, uh, menu item on the right there, yeah. That two-column display uh is what's referred to as a mega menu. And basically, it allows you to put more content in the reach of the users so that there's less clicking around. Right now on the Tacoma Park website, you have to actually physically click the menu items, have it drop down, and then click again. So you have two clicks whereby here, uh, we haven't even clicked yet, and you can get to just about everything you would need to do under departments, as well as you'll notice that they have the I want to to the left. And that's a very quick menu that a resident can go in and say, hey, this is, wha- what do I need to get accomplished? And they can have a single click to get to whatever function that they need to, to use within the city. And this is where the MyTKPK, the Resident Three-One-One System, would be able to interface so that all of the, the uh services that the city provides would be accessible right from the website. They wouldn't actually need to go to the uh MyTKPK interface if they didn't want to, but they, they would have multiple ways to do it. The second website is Williamsport, Maryland. I'm not showing this one out of uh design. They, they've made quite a few design mistakes. But again, what I wanted to point out was that they have everything uh above the fold. Uh, and what that means is that everything that you can see above, uh, without scrolling down, you can get to. You can see they utilize mega menus, and they have of uh events on their homepage there. And you can then get to a full calendar by viewing all events, but we haven't clicked on anything, but we know where things are. It's not the best design, but i- it does show you some things that they've done correctly. One other thing I'd point out here is accessibility for users that uh might be visually impaired. On the right-hand side, you'll see a sticky um, you know, little icon there for toggling high contrast and large text. So if you click on high contrast, you'll see you'll go to like a black and white screen or at least a black background. So that people who are visually impaired might be able to see the screen better. And uh, large text for, you know, people that need that. So um, you'll also notice one of the things on both of those sites is that the menu doesn't leave the page so that people can always get to the, to the menu items. So those are just some examples, and um, that's it for the website. Now, moving on to systems within the city, uh, the MyTKPK system runs on a platform that is called uh GovQA. It's a, it was purchased in two thousand and eight. It's been in use for quite a while in the city. And that platform is a vertical market platform, meaning that it's specifically built for state and local governments. And the uses that we, that the city of Tacoma Park uses it for is the uh MyTKPK, the citizen request or Three-One-One uh issues. Code enforcement, which we heard about earlier, uh landlord tenant issues. Not all of their uh work is done through the, here, but it is a place where they do track issues related to landlord tenant concerns. And it's also used for the CRM database, basically our rolodex of city residents. And the final one, I saved it for last, was the Public Works Tree Permits application, which was built out last year on this environment. We built it there because it was the only place in software that we had that would be able to accommodate building such a custom application based on the required, the specific requirements of the code and what Public Works was looking for. Next screen. This is just a picture of the uh relatively new redesigned MyTKPK online experience. This is a website. It stands alone separately from the city website, although you get to it from the city website. And the way this came about is that we looked at all of the citizen requests, and we took the highest priority ones based on the number of submissions we had. And we created icons for them that take you to the specific uh, the specific uh issue that a person needs to uh report. And here is uh some usage information regarding the uh GovQA or MyTKPK system. You'll see the tree removal significant uh as far as uh probably what was a backlog of a lot of people wanting to remove trees within Tacoma Park. And uh, that amount of requests came in within the last year. And then the other ones you'll see are related to complaints about parking, abandoned vehicles, landlord tenant, you know, those sort of issues that I already discussed. Uh, next screen. Okay. Uh, the GovQA platform has been in the city a while. It's, it hasn't been utilized to its fullest extent, and some of the issues that staff have had with it are poor performance. Uh, it was extremely slow when I first came to Tacoma Park and I reached out to the company, and they'd made some improvements, but it's still basically uh not as quick as some other environments. And it's also difficult to use. Uh, staff, it, it's very non-intuitive, and uh it takes a lot of training and, and experience to learn how to use it. The user interface for residents is very uh, you know, it's lacking. It's, it just doesn't look very well. And if you don't have a system that looks, looks good and is easy to use, they're not gonna be satisfied with, with how it works. The limited functionality uh is related, uh, I gave an example there, related to tree permits application. That basically is revolved around, we're trying to use this platform for things that it wasn't built for. And the tree permit removal uh application is difficult to do in this environment because it uh is not a relational database. It's very um, very flat in nature. So that uh, what that means is that when we create a tree permit removal application, if there's five trees, it's actually five uh, five requests in the system uh instead of one request with five trees. So um, you know, that limits the functionality of the system. Uh, the other problem that we have and that we're going to experience in the future is as we do more development, it's a closed, uh, I say closed API. Uh, API stands for Application Program Interface. And basically, what, what I'm saying in this uh comment here is that they don't want staff developing in this environment. The toolsets aren't exposed for us to develop in the environment. So basically, that means they do the development for you. They're willing to do it for you for little to no cost upfront because what they're doing is they're locking you into future uh, future uh guaranteed payments. So tree permit application's gonna cost us four to seven thousand dollars for a year, every year that we use it. And if we start adding more applications into this environment, it will be cost prohibitive because we're gonna be spending fifty-plus thousand dollars a year in no time for a system that just doesn't meet our needs. So um, next, okay. So the other issues that we have are related to general document management. We do not have a place to store documents. Uh, we keep things in uh silos, basically uh a network drive where each department has access based on which department they're, they're in. And there's no access control or version control over those documents. So, you know, we can't collaborate with them. We can't share them with council. We can't uh, we don't have any workflows related to uh documents that get created uh or approval processes, things like that. There's limited search functionality. Basically, you know, to find a document, staff need to go out onto a network drive and look through it, just like you would on your computer. You're looking in uh file folders. And uh, there, we have issues with, you know, it, long-term storage. We basically have a basement full of uh paper uh, which leads to, you know, outdated documents not being purged because nobody knows, you know, which box they're in and what uh, what needs to be purged. And, and, you know, it has confidentiality issues there because, you know, people can because, you know, people can access boxes of documents whereby if they're electronic, we can set up access controls and more importantly, logging so that we know who's accessed data. And that's what the reporting and analytics that I'm talking about there in the last comment is that we don't have any ability to know when people access files and what's, you know, what the workflows are most important for staff and and getting an idea of what what they do and and what processes are most important. So the recommendation, we've talked quite a bit in the office about content management systems. We've looked at several. In fact, some of them were investigated prior to my coming on in two thousand seventeen. And we've yet to be able to purchase a system. But my recommendation is for a non-vertical platform, meaning that a platform that city staff, consultants, or whoever can do development on the platform and build the business processes and and store documents that in the the way that they need to. We talk in in-house about these systems and I just put down buzzwords because you can read them all. There's no shortage of buzzwords related to what type of a system this is. You've heard it called case management, content services platform, whatever. And we have looked at a couple of them, three of them. We looked through Gartner reports, which are industry software rating services and recommendation firms. And we have come up with three that seem to align well with the city of Tacoma Park, one of them being through Canon. One of them, AODocs, is very tightly integrated with their Google Workplace Environment, which makes that a possibility. And then Highland On Base, which we've looked at several times once before I got with the city and once after, you know, I think back in two thousand eighteen. So these are all potential systems that would allow us to move forward with developing applications for this for the for the city and being able to accept online payments and and things like that. This type of purchase would require getting a mid-level developer, software developer, somebody who can spend and dedicate a lot of their time towards, you know, building out the applications and systems and workflows that staff need. So I think that is it. You can go to the next slide.
Councilmember Siemens, did you have a question for Lars?
Yes. Yeah, but I'll wait till the end of his presentation if you want.
I think he's done.
We're at a point, yeah.
No, I just.
We have one more slide and then we can open.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, Tracy, you want to jump in?
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. I'll be very brief, although I can certainly talk as long as you'd like me to on this subject. Human Resources has a few challenges just from a systems perspective. First of all, we're on three platforms, three separate platforms, and that doesn't include benefits management. So any change that we have to make, and we're making it at least that the identical change, we're making it at least two systems, if not three. If it's something related to benefits or like an address change or an employee information change that we have to also do in benefits, we're chain making the same change eight, ten times in different places. So it's extremely it's it's just an extreme time management issue that we have. The second issue is we are still entirely paper driven. From the day of hire to the day they retire, everything we're doing is on paper. Pre-COVID, it was very much, and most of them have multiple signatures that have to have begun on each piece of paper. So pre-COVID, it was us walking the pieces of paper around to the departments. Now, we're very much doing that electronically, but it's still just attachments on emails going to different people. And then, again, the duplicate changes being made. And then the third thing, there's no real place for an employee to be able to make changes themselves for address changes, phone number changes, taxes, four fifty-seven amount changes. Those are all coming to at least one person of human human resources that then again, does all the paperwork and makes all of the changes. So it's very, it's all very disruptive. It's a lot of, again, the same changes being made over and over and over again in multiple systems. An HRIS system and even the document management system, depending on what system we're looking at, having one platform that can do multiple things would make huge strides in efficiency and sustainability for the department and the city. And these are issues that touch every person that works for us. That's my spiel. Like I said, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Lars. It's really exciting to see that we're maybe going to move into the modern age. I just one thing that you didn't mention and I was just curious about it. You know, I know we've got a lot of desktops around the the city building, but, you know, a high percentage of the access from the community is through mobile devices and you didn't mention that. Any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, the the website was not designed for mobile primarily. If and, you know, we don't need to go back to it. But if you were to look at the two sites that we saw, Ocean City, Maryland and the Williamsport, they, if you shrink even that screen down, you'll see that the they're what's called responsive. And they'll display very well in on a cell phone as well as as well as a tablet and whatever platform that you're viewing it in. The the current design tools and testing tools allow you to test, you know, even based on which cell phone you have. So it says, you know, give me an iPhone twelve, give me a Samsung Galaxy tablet, give me an iPad, give me. So you can see what the site looks like on in every environment. And the the WordPress themes these days are all very responsive. So we would have a much better user experience. And getting away from these more static application-based websites would, you know, the usability is is key, absolutely the primary key for getting user adoption.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kostick and then Cercy.
Thank you very much for all this information. Just thinking of looking at the website. I wondered if you had statistics on the usage of the website and maybe if that could be used to kind of inform some of the design and the the kind of prioritization of maybe what ends up on the homepage, for example. And I actually, I just got through a few days ago, a huge process of switching over to a new website and redesigning our whole website for my other job. It was a huge amount of work. So I know, you know, going forward, this is definitely something that would be not not an easy process and will probably involve staff across the entire city doing work on content and other things. I'm also wondering if there will be an opportunity for residents to weigh in on what they'd like to see on the website. I think it might be useful to kind of get a sense of how people use the website, not just through the analytics, but also through what people might like to see or what they find challenging. And that might be useful as well to kind of think through. Thank you.
Councilmember Cercy.
Oh, awesome. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think all of these things are going to be critically important. In terms of the website, I I agree, moving out of a closed API environment is going to be critical, especially because there's, there is this movement in the tech space to kind of have this open API environment, which enables you to not only manipulate your site and data, but to be able to incorporate other people's data, right? So for example, if we with the COVID dashboard and things like that, you could free, open environment, we could figure out ways a software developer could leverage county data in a way that would automate like dashboard updates and things in a way that eliminates the need to have to do a lot of behind the scenes manipulation. So I I think that this will be a really good thing for us. To Councilmember Kostick's point, I think she raised a really good point about resident engagement. I would love to see that once we have like something ready for beta testing in terms of the website, if we were able to have some residents maybe be a part of that beta testing. I think that might be a really great way for us to get that feedback in a way that's a little different than a typical, hey, what do you want to see on the website or the survey? Kind of having some residents to actually be a part of the testing and giving you feedback in a real time way, I think will be really, really useful. And then, you know, I'm obsessed with things that quite frankly are just not sexy, but make work a lot easier. So the document management piece is going to be huge. The HR piece is going to be huge. It's not sexy. Residents are going to see it, but it will just make the lives of staff just so much better. It gives me heartburn to know that there are paper files in a basement somewhere. So if, you know, I I'm a full supporter of what it is that you all are are talking about implementing. One thing that I I did think about was, you know, in addition to the website, making sure it's app compatible and it works on a tablet, but to also prioritize thinking about not just, you know, the My TKPK, but also if there's other ways that we may want residents to provide comments or ask questions or to do things through the website that may be different from how we've traditionally used like the My TKPK, right? So right now, My TKPK is more about like, there's a pothole, right? It's different from, you have a question for the city manager. And so do we want to find ourselves in an environment where everyone's emailing all of us in a group message regularly? And the only people who know how to do that are people who are very in tune with the city enough to know to just email the whole council? Or do you want to make sure that we have a way for people to ask for feedback or ask questions or submit things that maybe aren't necessarily pothole related, so to speak? So those are some of the things that I think, you know, as we're able to move, well, I'm assuming, I'm believing that we're moving forward with this. But as you all are moving forward, thinking through the website redesign, that you kind of keep some of those other issues in mind because it may provide us with also a vehicle for dealing with some other like resident engagement and communication challenges that we're having right now. But overall, I think this is great.
And one of the things, just as Councilwoman Cercy was saying, one of the things that I think it was at the last, one of the last times we were actually at a meeting in person for National League of Cities, there are, there are some cities that actually have like the council emails and things like are public and part of their website. So I and I don't exactly know all the that goes into that because you have to be careful because there is some stuff that isn't actually for public, like personnel things and other things. But that's just something to like put a pin in and think about in terms of, you know, transparency and having things open. Is that something that we would want to look at? I think it was somewhere in Colorado, Fort Collins does this and a number of other cities do it. So it's just something else to think about as you're thinking about different uses for the website.
Right. I know the our website does have email addresses for staff on it. I don't recall if councils are on there, but actually that does open us up to some security issues by actually posting those. So it 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 has been problematic to do that. So I understand the need for transparency, so but there are ways of of getting around that. And but that'll be all in the the design requirements, which we'll definitely be getting feedback and input and working with the residents so that, you know, we can build what they need and what they're looking for in the council.
And I do know it's twelve thirty and we have another work session, so we don't have to talk about the website in depth tonight. I have Councilwoman Dibala, Siemens and Kostick again.
Yes, thanks. This has been really, really helpful. I don't know much about how these things work and the explanation was great. But I do know that I find it very frustrating to find things on the city website. And I know more about how it's where things are are posted than a lot of people. And so is that when you were talking about search? Is and and the problems with search and how to fix them, is that what my problem is? Or is it that that would get fixed because you'll have all these dropdown menus and you won't be searching in the first place? Or both?
A combination of both. We we definitely need better navigation and that'll be done through one of the processes, a user user interface experience and basically really neat project of taking sticky sticky notes and putting them up on a board and moving them around and determining where things go and and how a person goes about using the site. So need exercises, there'll be a lot of people involved in in those so that we make sure that we get the navigation right.
My only other question, you said in document management that you need a software developer, forgive me, is that a program or a person? And if it's a person, is it a consultant or a staff?
Preferably a staff, a full-time staff for development. You know, there is a huge lack of applications in in the city. There are some, but, you know, it's a, it's just a hodgepodge of, you know, either homegrown stuff. But, yeah, this this person would be dedicated full-time to developing.
To doing all this, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for hanging in, all of you so late.
Yeah, thank you. All right, other people took down their hands, so I guess their questions were asked or they know we'll come back to this. I think just the other other thing I'm thinking about, the file management, as you were talking about, and I know Lars, you and I have talked about this before too, is just like thinking about that and in terms also of how the council can access files and things, because I think that would save a huge amount of time because I know I ask staff for the same documents over and over again because I don't have, like, I can't find where I saved it in my personal file. And I, there's no way for me to access like staff files. So that's something that I know if Daryl was still listening, she would definitely be nodding because I feel like I just ask her for the same things over and over again. So having a, you know, some kind of better system, I think, will be really helpful. Oh, all right. Well, thank you so much and really thank you for hanging in there so late tonight. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Jessica, we up to redistricting?
We are.
This is Jessie.
Yeah, so, yeah, so hopefully this won't take too long. This was something that was discussed during the council's priorities meeting to the concept of hiring a consultant this time to assist with the redistricting process. So at this point, we wanted to nail down that concept with the council, make sure that that is the way that you are willing to go and to lay out some sense of what we think a schedule might look like. And the cost, you know, we don't really know. We've talked to some people about what the cost might be. We're thinking between fifteen and thirty thousand. Honestly, until we put something out, I don't think we'll know for sure. But that's that's what we're guessing. Remember, this is something that only gets done once every ten years. So it's not, it's like it's an annual cost and it it will save a So it's not, it's like it's an annual cost and it it will save a lot of staff time. To have a consultant work on this as opposed to trying to do the mapping and analysis in-house. So with that. I, as you all know, everyone's doing redistricting at the same time on the same compressed timeframe. So that will be a challenge. So I I think we should not delay in getting out. An RFP if possible, so I I would suggest our suggestion is to. Draft the N R F P and issue it in April, select a vendor in May and be ready to run with it. With the selected vendor in in the summer to do the preliminary work. Starting in September, hold, get some initial feedback from council and hold. Start a really robust public engagement process to explain to the community what's involved in redistricting, what it means, what. To to do, to try to do a lot of education about that, and I would hope that the consultant that's selected would be skilled in that. And then going through the process in the fall and looking for. Options to be considered by the council in January and February to. To get us ready for the election in two thousand twenty-two. So if. Any comments or thoughts that the council has at this point would be helpful, we'll take notes and. So we'd like to hear from you at this point.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, that's a great timeframe. Thank you. When is the. Data available from the census and if we had someone on board this summer, would there be? The data available for them to do it, or is there preliminary stuff they need to do?
Right. So so no, I mean. My understanding is we're looking at September thirtieth for the census data, but there is preliminary work in terms of. Looking at the data we have now, looking at the existing boundaries, looking at the 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 information we have now. Needs to be incorporated into the process as well. So so there will be work to be done, but we won't have the census block data. Until the end of September.
It's also good to get, if we're going to go in this direction to get somebody.
Yeah, I was just about to say we'd beat the June rush here. Yeah.
Councilmember Siri.
So my question kind of piggybacks off of Councilmember Dibala. So in thinking through the timing. The data comes in September, we have the contractor already on board because we've already issued our RFP. Then how much will the redistricting needs to be, will the mapping and everything need to be done by the end of? The calendar year twenty twenty-one in order for, because I guess I'm thinking about. Election, are we doing mail-in ballots again? Are we doing vote by mail again? Are like, are wards going to change like? So it's like lead time. I'm sorry, Jessie, I don't know it's late, but like. Like, how much lead time do we need in order to finalize the maps? So that residents will know which ward they're now a part of, so that we can make sure that everything is updated. So if you do vote by mail, they'll get their mail, their.
Right. Well, given the time constraints we're working in, I mean, I I'm. I would hope that in February, by February, council would be adopting the new maps. I mean, if it can be done earlier, I I don't exactly know. I think because there needs to be a public process and a review process. It will take some time, but I would hope very early in the year, in the year, the council will be ready to. Approve new boundaries.
Boundaries, okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about it, if you're running for office, yeah, you need to know, yeah, candidates need to know. Voters need to know.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, just all of a sudden he'd be like, man, this has to happen fast.
Yeah, yeah.
So would the council have to make a decision, and I hate to move into election discussion. But would we, I know that, you know, for the last election, we did vote by mail out of necessity. But, I mean, would the council also need to make a pretty early decision after redistricting if we were planning to do? Vote by mail or no?
No, I I hope the council makes that decision in the fall, sooner than that. Yeah, it's. That isn't relying on the district boundaries in any way. So I I think we're scheduled to have the Board of Elections come back to council in. June.
Okay.
To discuss options and and so, yeah.
So but the boundaries, wouldn't that impact the ballots or no?
Well. How you're going to do the election isn't impacted by where the word.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Councilmember Siemens.
Somebody must have done something wrong because I've seen, remember seeing this done a couple of times since I've been on the council.
Yeah, every ten years or so.
All right, you know, I mean, you know, looking back at what went on in the past. And looking at how much work we have put on staff, I don't see any way where we're going to. Get this done on time by unless we go out and and get someone to help us do it. And given the fact that everybody's going to be doing this at the same time, it probably behooves us to move fast. And so. I would like to see you bring it back to us next week. Resolution to vote on.
Well, um.
She's joking.
No, okay, good. Thank you.
Because he'll be the only one here next week because we don't have a council.
Exactly, yeah. So you scared me. So, yeah, so what what I'm hoping for tonight is is direction for the the city manager to. Start the process of developing that RFP.
Member Kovar, are you reaching for your, yes.
You can tell what I'm reaching for. I just have one really quick question. I mean, do we expect? Major changes or is the population fairly stable? I realize we can change it if we want anyway, but. If the population stays about the same and we don't change the number of wards, my expectation would be that there wouldn't be major changes, but. Do you have a sense for that?
I don't. I I I would expect that, I mean, we know that there there's minimal. I mean, changes are, I expect small. I mean, we haven't had, we don't have new housing developments here. We don't have annexation. There there are a lot of things that don't happen in Tacoma Park that.
In the charter, it says the wards have to have something like substantially similar population. How is it up to us to decide if they're close enough or is it, do we have to get them down to like the exact?
Yeah, so there are some standards. Set by, you know, court, various court cases. So there are standards.
Be or something like what the.
Yeah, so what's a reasonable, how how close do they need to be and what's reasonable and? And the consultant will be able to advise on that.
That's true for geographical contiguousness or contiguous, or whatever the word is also. I mean, is there. And there's no hard and fast rule on that, right?
Yeah, so so again, I would expect you'll get a primer on all of that at the start of the process.
Thank you.
All right, well, it sounds like we're game for going in this direction. So I think we should start. Looking at having the city manager pull together an RFP and we will consider it. As soon as it's ready.
All right, Jessica, tomorrow, we're going to tomorrow.
Yeah.
Clear schedule tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah, right.
You got seven hours. All right, we're done for the night. No meeting next week, April seventh, six P M. Don't forget, April seventh, six P M budget presentation. All right. Thank you, everyone.